All right. So it looks like they only have the one item and it is a public hearing tonight, right? What you got going on that? Excuse me, what do you got going on your, on your?
Yeah.
So D M A twenty twenty three oh three.
Yeah, so a rezone proposal and they, they want to rezone thirty acres of land to their R fifteen zone. And this is part of the kind of the master streets plan submitted. Continues through on some acres and stage coach and we've got the same developers as well in that, in that project. Kind of similar requests that came complaining were the roadway connections and pathway opportunities and. We just, yeah, just some of those, some of those things is what we looked at and. They've, they've also proposed some contributions to the parks district similar to what they've done with stage coach. But, yeah, any, any questions on that? Maybe something on the report that guys had questions on or? Something that wasn't quite clear.
Felix, first of all, I love the reporter. It was one of my, my favorite reports.
Wow.
Very informative. It's great. And can't believe that. I, I'm, believe, for the seventeen hundred south, the, the redirection of seventeen hundred south is because of the slew, correct?
Uh, it's because, well, you mean like the?
Why it's not just going straight through because you only have so many passes over the slew?
I think it's primarily because you have that connection to Halcyon and.
Oh, the other way.
Westward.
Yeah, westward because the slew is on the west border and so you can't just, you can't go across the slew, so it's going to connect back up. To, I don't know, eighteen, about sixteen hundred or?
Yeah, and the reason, I mean, we, we, we would like to minimize impacts from the roadway, especially along the.
Okay, so just trying to have as few, um, as few roads cross over the slew as possible.
Yeah.
Okay.
But which will retire them?
And I have one other question.
Well, further west.
I see where you're at.
Okay, is whenever you get a connectivity incentivized area, they're able to take the gross instead of the net area? Is that the idea? So they get to leave the roadways in when they calculate their?
Yeah, it's.
Their lot size.
It's a little different. So the connectivity incentivized ordinance is a potentially a default. So if they had the smaller zone, they could get that by.
But they can't do that with this, correct?
Um, no, because you're giving them a rezone based off of very specific criteria. So no, they wouldn't be able to use the connectivity incentivized. We've kind of turned the connectivity incentivized into a legislative decision. So you can see, all right, if they are putting together a really good street, uh, network, uh, at that point, maybe they're a little more. Qualified, I guess, more, there's more merit given than a reason. If they didn't have good connectivity, for example, if you see something with a cul-de-sac. Under certain circumstances with a planning staff would be appealing that, but most designers would say, you know, that's not. Connectivity, that's not great connectivity. And so we would encourage you to not deal with the cul-de-sac. Or if you did give them a cul-de-sac, not give them quite as much units.
So here it looks like the gross area is divided into average third acre, but the intent of. From what I understand, the intent of the general plan is for the net area to be one third acres.
It's gross. Yeah, it's, it's intended to be gross. Uh, so we're not, um, giving a consequence to the developers. Because they're putting more road connections in. For example, they've minimized the streets just by having a single line with a couple of, you know, uh, cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
Uh, but because we're asking them to make more connections, they're putting more of a bill.
So normally for like, uh, uh, connectivity incentivized subdivision, subs- subdivision, that would be the case. But where we're allowing to go from one acre down to a third acre, then the connectivity. Becomes more of, okay, we're letting you go down to the third instead of the acre, which is where this one, I think, falls. So shouldn't it be the net area needs to be third acre, like third acre lots? Cause I think that's kind of what was intended, that what the residents wanted to see were third acre lots.
So there's a little bit of support for that in the plan. Um, the direction that we've gone on the other ones that we've, we've worked on. The direction that Commissioner Brewer has given us is he likes the idea of lot flexibility, that blowing up the last six thousand square feet. And it takes that off. And so he's looking at, uh. Gross divided by fifty thousand square feet and then.
And that's how many lot units you get.
And that's, so, yeah, basically it's a density calculation from the get-go. We start with that density calculation. This is how many lots you could get.
And maybe this bigger than small and you just average them out and that's great. That's how many units you get.
That's right. And the other factor of that is sometimes we're going to ask for a road connection. It's going to be a weird shaped, uh. Piece of land that might not be fifteen thousand or even ten thousand.
Yeah.
As long as they figure it to be down to six thousand, potentially one of those.
Well, the flexibility, I understand, I just, I thought that we discussed a while ago that you couldn't do connectivity incentivized and count it. So I.
No, I do remember that discussion, uh, but it, it went a little.
It is changed.
Different way. I didn't know if you had picked up that one.
I, I probably missed meetings in December and that's probably when it changed, but the commissioners are aware of this and this is what we, everyone's agreed that we could do that. Okay.
Are we, are we seriously looking like a roadway down seventeen hundred south away from?
We're considering it. We're considering asking of it, uh, cause it provides cross block connections there. Are you concerned about that?
Uh huh. I don't like it. Okay. Because I would rather that we do something more over here on sixteen hundred, like we talked about last week.
Sixteen hundred will still be.
I know, okay, I know one. But so seventeen hundred, how, is seventeen hundred going to go east all the way up to thirty five hundred? Is that the intent? Through, through, through what is the old part of Halcyon, which was DiGiorgio's original subdivision? And then all the way up to Pat's new subdivision on the east side of the Giorgio?
So and it'll connect up there? It'll connect all the way through to the east side of that subdivision.
Okay.
And we're actually talking to a landlord just west.
Where are you?
Not, not parcel right next to it, but a landlord or west of that about obviously doing that.
And we're, and we're also doing the same thing with.
This seventeen hundred cross block connections, it's not imperative. We saw it when the staff and the engineers really liked the idea of making all the connections. But you can see underneath the dark line, that dark line is what we made, uh, a line that we made. It's not. Some of those connections and the zigzags and stuff like that is going to be flexible based off of how the, uh. Property owner can figure out how to lay it out and get these sized lots out of it.
Yeah.
Um, but you can see how they laid it out in the first place. What the market dictates is nice rectangular lots. Which means sharp angles on street corners, uh, in different kinds.
Well, and my concern is, is I wouldn't mind it so much if it was more straight up seventeen hundred, but when it jogs back over, what about sixteen fifty, sixteen seventy five? You know, something in that neighborhood. It's like you're going to have two fairly good sized roadways that are relatively close together.
Are these, uh, something that is still anticipated as being a small roadway?
Is that on there?
Yeah, so it's still, uh, it would be a sixty foot wide, uh, connection instead of a sixty six.
How much asphalt? Same thirty four feet or thirty two feet or whatever?
State, yeah, state just adopted an ordinance that nowhere than thirty two, uh, few asphalt or new, new code. So we got to change our standards to reflect that. Otherwise we would probably add one closer to thirty six.
That's weird. I don't know why it's not.
But I like the state's new rules because that narrower right of way will create slower traffic.
So with, what's the width of the right way going to be then? Sixty six feet?
Sixty for the sixty, yeah, where sixteen hundred will be sixty six. Uh, this one, seventeen hundred, we wouldn't require a multi-use pathway.
Yeah.
Um, so they'll save a little bit on that. Where sixteen hundred will be that multi-use.
Well, the thing is, what I'd rather do is jog to the south and come over here along the edge of this potential. The open space for Halcyon, but then I don't know how that lines up with the other part of the subdivision that already exists.
Uh, you mean to the, uh, west?
To the south. So instead of jogging over where Halcyon's potential is there, where their open space is. Instead of it jogging north, have it jog over to the edge of that open space and continue east.
So that would run right into planted mods.
Yeah, that's the problem is because it's all, it's already done up there.
It'd be nice to see a, a more uniform block out of that.
Yeah. That's why I don't like it. It's not that I don't like the concept of it. It's that I don't like the way that it lays out with existing.
That's a challenge. And this is all new one. And so if you would rather see, so the, yes, old DiGiorgio subdivision, it's got kind of a interesting cross shape to it. Uh, where you can see this, uh, temporary turnaround with the dash line on the far right-hand side of that map, um, under the, the dark line. Um, that's one of the phases of Halcyon and I think they got two lots out of that. And it just connects to the end of one of the roads in the DiGiorgio subdivision, which then extends. It goes over and then drops back down again and the path's taken and bring it back up again. So this will be a meandering.
Yeah, it'll meander from, from that point where it, where we run out of map right here, it'll meander. It doesn't, it won't go straight east about, yeah, because.
What's existing.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what's even in there that's eaten runs east. There's the old road that's clear over on the north side. Which that might kind of line up with actually.
Nice.
A little bit, but that's okay. So he's going to take that road where it, where it bends up here in the northeast corner, northeast corner of the DiGiorgio subdivision and they get it all straight. So that it ends up in this new subdivision.
In that subdivision with, yeah, right, right here. So just.
So it'll come, it'll come up right here in the paths.
As it actually picks up here. So it'll come in right here.
Oh, it'll come over here. Okay.
Not over here. That's right. I mean, they could, they could turn and go up that way.
Yeah.
But, uh, oh, no, that way ends and goes straight north right there. So that does make, uh, so there's no right of way up through here.
I don't see any requests. I don't know.
Thanks, Casey. Not really, but again, it's fine. All right. I feel that and, um, anybody got anything else on? Yeah. So what the, so, um, Felix, we have the opportunity to table it. And so I guess this is kind of a broader part of the conversation for me anyway. And, and the rest, uh, planning commissioners, are we, where we feel comfortable with the smart growth principles? Have they been addressed to the satisfaction of being able to move this forward or?
Yes, yes, we, we considered the, kind of the developments at a whole and how they connect. And that's, that definitely got cooperation with the developer on. Designing these roads, getting the appropriate widths we need and, um, trail connection and things. So, yes, I, I agree. Probably a couple of things in smart group that, uh, they might not be both checking boxes. Uh, water conservation was supposed to be listed in their smart group in our general plan. We're actually running real quick amendment, uh, with the changes that. From a work point, uh, folks are doing, uh, to just make sure water conservation is part of that. Um, so, uh, that should be in there and then, um, energy conservation as well. But energy conservation is a little bit harder. I'm trying, I'm working with the building official to try and nail down exactly what that means. We know the state is asking counties to, uh, make buildings more energy efficient over time. And so we're, we're, uh, referring back to the twenty thirteen energy code. And then each year, buildings all have to be a certain percentage more efficient. And so we're just going to try and dive into that and maybe even make an ordinance for you in the future. That says it's got to be whatever the state says needs to, you know, whatever the state's greater energy efficiency is plus two or plus ten or whatever that number needs to be. So you'll see that in the proposal soon. Uh, the other thing is, um, energy generation. So solar, uh, hydrothermal, whatever it may be. Uh, if you're trying to get landowners to be in work that, you can see from, uh, uh, energy conservation perspective. And what we have here, after we've talked about, um, you know, the street connections and the decent streets, uh, basically help the. Fuel efficiency, it's helped with load mitigation, air quality, stuff like that. Um, there's actually a really cool book. Um, there was a. Presenter at one of the recent sort of Utah planning conferences that showed how a subdivision that. Read there, Sarah, subdivision that has. That has the Kirby, has Kirby lines get like one single Kirby line that gets access to all of the, uh, land in the subdivision. Is a far more, um, efficient air, air quality efficiency, uh, so sorry, enhances air quality efficiency. It enhances fuel.
This is not the right number.
Or enhances wear and tear on vehicles.
I don't know.
But the most ideal way that he was saying to set these up is to first plan your roads. And a single road as much as you can, no stops, no starts. It's just flow through at a reasonable residential speed. That's the best way to create your subdivision.
In a car, but it's not the best for pedestrians.
That's right. So that was the other thing he mentioned is let your vehicle connections, but you need to have cross, uh, pedestrian.
Five zero seven.
Through this, yeah.
So I didn't notice here, it doesn't mention in the recommendations, it had it in the letter, the two thousand dollar. Um, donation to the park district. I mean, it's part of the, um, they, they got the letter here, but it's not included in the, um. You see, I don't see it in the.
Staff recommendations. May have been.
There we go.
Were they going to give a little bit more on that as well? It's house and.
Well, it's housing, okay.
Uh, three thousand dollar per lot minimum.
Well, now, so to that, to that point, does that have to be part of, of this? Or are we feeling confident that Park District's up and running on their own now? They're handling, they're part of it. And all we need to be is notified that that's what we do.
Uh, that part, yes. Now, whether or not they're handling it, uh, I don't know. I'm not in the, I'm inside their administration, but. They seem to think they know what they need and what they want. And right now, honestly, what they need is to install a park, um, where they own land now. So, uh, I did see a proposal. Lance Pearson brought it over, uh, proposed layout for the park and they, the park district. And so I think that was actually Pat's proposed design for the mark, uh, from Reed, uh, Reed and Associates. So they're going to take that, hire their own consultant to evaluate the proposed improvements, ensure that it works for them. So that they're not getting, you know, two inches of asphalt on three inches of base course where they're parking off.
But we still need to include it in our, in order for like, the parks district can't come to them and say, you must pay this. We have to put it. If I party, we have to put it in here. Otherwise, there's no guarantees that they are actually going to pay the parks district. Unless it's been writing from the new zone.
Right. But we refer to, uh, development agreements by.
Yes, but if it doesn't get included in the development agreement, then the parks district would be out of luck if they wanted, if they weren't what they asked.
Liam, at what point in time does, does the parks district become their entity where they're negotiating these things? And that there, this is not under our, our planning mission per se.
Well, I.
Or does it ever?
Well, it does when that property is supposed to be invading park district. I mean, when the park district. Has land, owns the land or wants to step up, whatever, whatever our development agreement says. I mean, if we want to negotiate on behalf of the park district and they want us to do that, we can do that. But.
That's really, that's kind of my point. Yeah, maybe, maybe. So, I mean. I'm, I'm good putting in to, into our part of it, whatever we have to. But we're not the ones that are responsible for that negotiation. And fine and dandy, if they bring something to planning and planning, you guys put it into the package. And then it's in there. That's great. But, you know, what's.
It doesn't have to be. No, it doesn't have to be. So if you guys didn't want that, if you wanted the park district to negotiate their own deal and work out.
Oh, it's not a want or not want. It's just a, at what point in time does that, are they responsible for what they're asking for? And they've gotten what they're asking for so that something doesn't get missed between what they're doing and what we're doing. That's my concern. So, you know, I, I guess.
I think it's why we have something put in our order that says.
The town's.
Word is out. That gives us that comfort though. Cause right now they. Comment that is. It's now current unless we have part of some type of, um. That right now that's the case.
He's a part of this, right? But, yeah, and we've got to be cautious, um, when we're talking about monetary donations. The state office is very sensitive to the idea of communities avoiding or enrolling the impact fee. Uh, act, uh, by creating these financial obligations that they're not calling impact. Um, we don't want to call these impact fees for good reason. They're not. They are a contribution. The impact is going to be, uh, the impact to the parks area. Is, uh, going to be compensated by the impact fees that the park district is going to be about. And so when they go to pay their impact fees, if those fees have already been paid by the previous developer, they could potentially get out of any paying impact. These developers are not paying an impact fee right now. They're paying to get the park district up front with it. Uh, and then with gifts and they know they're not going to get the rezones unless those gifts are, are, are given. And, and really, it's hard to even say it that way because.
It's not a gift, they're being forced to give because we're requiring, or we're saying, oh, where's your money?
Well, but they're getting, I would say for a purchase, it's for a trade because they're getting.
Equitable consideration.
Yeah.
That's so, that's why.
Higher density for their contribution. And, but they're also, and this is where it comes in. It seems an impact related fee because they are contributing to a much greater impact on the community.
Right.
Than they would be otherwise.
Well, I'll, I'll be relieved when the park run, when the park district does this on their own. Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe we should start helping them get set up for success on that. Right now, if we were to adopt an ordinance that said this money needs to be donated to the park district. The office's office would say that's an impact. You can follow the impact fee, uh, rules, um, creating an impact fee, facilities plan and then like the, um, analysis. Our district's working on that, but if we're asking for an impact fee and they're asking for an impact fee, then basically cross.
Right, right. Yeah, or if we, if we, if one of us is thinking that the other one's doing it.
Yeah, right.
And then it doesn't happen at all.
Yep.
You know.
So the only way I see this working with the park district operating independent of us putting these, these kind of conditions in a development agreement. Is the park district has a contract with the developer that says they will actively advocate for the subdivision, or sorry, for the rezone with the county. If the developer gets that again. Uh, right now, we don't have that. They're just giving us a letter saying they have offered a gift and we have accepted it, uh, as long as you give the rezone.
But once they're set up, it can be a formal impact fee for, or is that not possible?
School ball, I would say school ball. Because do you have a setup fee? Right, this one thing, but helping.
The increased density, we still have to do through this mechanism.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, we, we've set our standards though, that two thousand dollars per lot. Uh, so what I wrote was like two thousand dollars per lot minimum contribution or in kind as approved by the parks district.
Yeah, maybe a little asterisk. It says, or as otherwise mutually agreed by a developer.
Yeah. Well, that, and that's my whole point. If the park district feels that they can negotiate something more out of this, I want them to get everything they can. That, that's what I'm after here. And that's why I, I don't feel comfortable with us, even, I'm glad we, we set that two thousand dollar, you know, map. That's fine. Cause at least we have something there. But every circumstance is different and, and the, the parks, uh, district needs to get up to speed. So that they know how much benefit they actually can get out of, out of something versus letting us. Um, negotiate sort of that for them. I, I, I'm uncomfortable with that situation and that's why I'm kind of pushing that. Yeah, and that's why I kind of dropped off from being chair from pushing that. But now that I'm the chair tonight, I'm going to push it again. I would like to see that get done because I don't think it's right. It's not that it's not right. It is a mechanism. But the potential may be being missed. And that's what bothers me. So we're not mandating the two thousand dollars. Um, I think the park district has just said, oh, that's. It's nice that they're doing that for us.
They were asking, my concern right now from what we've heard from the parks district, um, I don't think they're asking enough. I am a little concerned about their analysis of what is needed. And so we, we as board came up with two thousand dollars. And I kind of want to push that as, as the minimum. And then the parks district can go from there and say, oh, in kind, or this is what we need. And they can go above. But I'm nervous about giving them latitude to go below that because I, I don't personally, and I, I don't know. I, I think all of us kind of were concerned about anything less than that.
Yeah. Yeah, and if every developer is standing thinking that the two thousand dollars is their default. Um, and the park district isn't paying attention to the land that they're developing, there may be some really cool park space in these developments. That could be developed as a park. For example, right next door to this, um, there's a lot of space that could easily be developed right next to Walker's Loop. And the Walker's Loop, if, if a developer doesn't dedicate that to the county, gift it to the park district or whatever, we're going to have to pay for it at some point. Um, and so we've worked with developers to accept that from them, uh, as, uh, part of our actions. But maybe the park district wants to say, all right, that's probably a good enough contribution because we got to now have all this linear land. And widely near land, you know, three hundred feet wide or whatever, then we'll have a, a linear park with a trail and all this. So, yeah, I don't want them to miss those opportunities either because they're so focused on one nine acre park.
But if we use that term in kind, then we can say, okay, they can say, okay, the parks district has an idea of what they've been asking everyone else. Say, okay, this is, you know, fifty lots, two thousand dollars a lot. We're looking at a hundred thousand dollar.
But feeling that open ended like you mentioned, that still gives them the opportunity to go and negotiate some more. So I'm, I'm good with that. And for what we're doing. In the near term, that's fine.
But I think we'll always have to do that because the parks district, you can't negotiate this. As far as the new development and the rezoning goes, they'll never be able to.
Why can't they?
Do this.
If they don't get what they want, it won't move forward to come to us.
It could. It just would be the park district done.
But without to do it, but without, yeah, without their recommendation, what are we going to do? So that's the whole point.
Make the recommendation a contingency, kind of like the waters district or the sewers. Then you get that parks district and then come to us.
That's exactly what I want to see in here. It's another letter from somebody that says, we're happy. And we don't have to play with it.
I'm just hoping.
I think that's the way it should be.
Just a straight up letter of support.
Sure, sure.
You know, and if they want to, if they want to put in, in, if they want to give details, great, that's fine. I don't, I don't know that that's our concern or not. But at the same time, it just, it just cuts that part out for us where we don't have to worry about them not getting the advantage of everything they can get.
Well, I've got, uh, contacts with the park district. Quinny in our attorney's office is there. I mean, so, um, I'll talk to Brandon Quinn, um, about the possibility of just. Creating a, an agreement, a template agreement that the park district can use, which is a cut in between the two. And they could just send us a letter saying, we satisfied, you don't have to worry about it. Of course, we're going to want to know kind of what it is. Cause if it is just a two thousand dollar contribution, I don't want to know that.
Right.
Well, that's kind of Matt when I talked about the ordinance. So we just do similar, we'll give it the water. We just get an approval from them.
Yeah.
And we're totally out of it.
Yeah, and, uh, just so you know, in the rezone, uh, ordinance, which. They are, may not have made it a version of that, I can't remember what version it was on. Um, we are adding, uh, language to require with a rezone, uh, a parts plan. And then I'm going to move that forward once we get that done into the subdivision section as well. And it might just be, we already did our contribution with the rezone. It might be. Like five quarters. Like five quarters.
Well, they're not sure if you want to come back to the special. We're walking ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And in the meeting room.
Yes, I'm admitting you.
Recording in progress.
Kind of combines all these different elements together to show. The, uh. The, uh, future land use, which is in yellow. And what, what that is, there's a suggestion in the general plan that, that allows for. Um, rezones of this nature. If the proposal implements smart growth principles. Uh, this map also shows, uh, pathway opportunities. Uh, along, along, um, drainage corridors. Uh, this also shows road alignments. So the, the solid white and the dashed white in this circumstance indicate, uh, roads planned through this area. And. We'll go to the next slide. So here's the, the master roads plan. It includes several developments in the area. And this, uh, you can see what, what they're, what they're planning is some roadway connectivity. We, uh. Utilizing the, uh. The road connections shown in the general plan map. In this case, you have sixteen hundred South Street. Which would be a, um, neighborhood collector. And then you have this dark gray road that continues through these developments and labeled as seventeen hundred South. And that is, that is also a, a minor neighborhood. Collector, um, street. Some of the things that we looked at when reviewing this is potential for. Um, preservation of, of, um, of the Walker's Slough. I've, I've labeled this, this particular area. And you can see it's labeled Walker's Slough with a, a dark line there and. We, planning feels like there's good potential there for a copula. And that's, that's what led us to making this request here. On the, uh, focus your attention on the road seventeen hundred South. Um, in red, let me see if I can put my pointer on it. And move it around, so that is a suggested pathway. That would, at this point, it's, it's just a segment, but. Uh, through further opportunities, we, we build a wire, a connection to the Walker's Slough pathway. And. Going to the next slide. This is a, um, a map showing a half mile radius. Around the, the smart fills development, looks like it went out of line there, excuse the, the map error. But the, the actual smart fills development, you can see where it's located in, in red. And then that rectangular piece is part of the daily landing open space that is donated as, you know, park parcel. So there's potential for that to become a park at some point. And another, another element that is important to look at is related to drought conditions. And efforts that the developers take to conserve water. And work with local districts to, uh, prepare a, a water conservation plan. And. Let me get this lined up here. Right, so there's, there's best practices that should be implemented to. Uh, reason for those. Um, due to the current conditions that exist in Weaver County, this is from, from recent data, you know, the last week. You know, from drought dot doc, and you can see the, the beige colored area is labeled as moderate drought. And that covers pretty much the entire Weaver County, but then you have the severe drought areas and in the, in the western portion of Weaver County. And so that's why we, we've paid special attention to that in this particular request. And we've made a recommendation in our report, uh, for one, one possible option that can be written into development agreement. Is that the developer provides three or four typical water wise yard designs. That are designed by a professional landscape architect. And those are given, that be made available to the, the lot buyers, that they could implement a number of those strategies. And to save on water usage for, for the outdoor watering. Uh, relevant factor B. Skip over to that. Is the request compatible with the overall character of the existing development in the area? And. Uh, looking at the, the aerial imagery and the existing developments. A zone change to fifteen thousand square foot. Uh, would be a, a drastic change from what it's, what the land is currently used for. Currently, it's used for crop production. Um, and so the opportunity for crop production under that zone is pretty unlikely. Uh, but there is opportunity for, um, for more, more housing. Which is a needed, um, benefit. And also, the, um, there are some semi agricultural leases that are written into the already. So if a landowner wishes, pursue some, maybe some small local and, um. Some small, and, um, husbandry, they, they can do so. Um, as you can see, most of the land in the area, let me, let me go back to the map here. We'll just go back to here. Okay. Um. So as you can see, land to the north, east and west is devoted to agriculture pursuits, uh, which contribute to the rural feel of the area. And there are several residential subdivisions to the south and east that have. A mixed lot sizes from sizing from one acre to around nine thousand six hundred square feet. We're. Okay, relevant factor C. Is how may this request adversely affect adjacent property? Uh, part of our analysis included, um, considering different effects that might take place and the, the, the most immediate. And noticeable effect would be increased traffic. And the interruption of, of their views. I know I, I've been out there numerous occasions and the views out there are spectacular, I would, I would, I would agree with that. You know. So some residents will no longer have the same view from their property, however, with the preservation of land for local parks. And regional parks and pathways on Walker's Slough. Open spaces with captivating views can still be easily accessed. Here we have a relevant factor D. Uh, will the area rezone be developed in a manner that will not substantially degrade natural slash ecological resources? Or sensitive lands? So the county regards the Walker's Slough as an important place making feature in western Weaver. And. The, the Walker's Slough and the natural buffer of trees and grasses that have, have the potential to become an invaluable public amenity. It is for this reason that the general plan identifies this area for preservation. Um, a rezone of this land in particular to this development, uh, will not degrade the area designated by the general plan. And will, uh, relevant factor E is will a traffic mitigation plan prevent the transportation borders from diminishing below an acceptable level of service? Uh, we've taken great care in, in working with the developer to, uh, ensure that we have. Efficient road designs that will allow for traffic to flow through. And we've also, uh, made it clear that the appropriate right of way widths will be, will be, uh. Will be, um. I guess gathered or acquired. And. Let's see, we're going to the next relevant factor, relevant factor F. So are there adequate facilities to serve this subject property? And. There are, um, utility services. That would serve this residential development. Uh, you have culinary water and secondary water infrastructure. And you also have the. Um, this property that will be served by the central Weaver sewer district. And I've prepared a couple of model motions to, um, help assist in making that decision, um. Model motion one. And model motion two. And these are. Reflected in the staff report. I've also included a, a slide with the findings that are in the staff report as well. That, that's the things that I had to present, any, any questions, I hope I wouldn't bore you to death.
Commissioners? Any questions for staff? Okay. Think you're off the hook for a minute. Okay. Um, at this point in time, I think unless anybody has, uh, any questions for staff or from, or, hold on just a minute, or for the developer. Um, we could, we could have the developer come up and speak as well, so does anybody have anything that, any questions or comments to the developer?
I just have one question for you, Pat.
Come on up. You know the drill, name and address.
Pat Burns, fourteen oh seven North Mountain Road. Uh, like long walks on the beach, I'm.
Not that much information.
It's probably just a silly question, but like, park strips will have the six inch angled rock in the park strips, correct? So are you doing that?
So yeah, it would be part of, that's just one option, so it's not necessarily guaranteed we'll do that, but we're just trying to give options as to what would work for something. That makes sense?
Yes, for sure.
But yes, it would be in the development agreement and it would, if that's adopted, then yes, we would have, then.
if I ended up building it, if I sold lots, whether I had to build it, I'd have to actually fund it before the homeowner, not the homeowner, but not theirs.
Okay, so then as the lots are sold, then those things would happen.
Either depending on the county, I don't want to speak for the county, it would be either if a building permit was given before it was done, it had to be done before CFO was approved.
Right. That's, that's what I wanted to know. So we can't really go in there and do that, put trees in prior to the people.
And a lot of times, same thing like the sidewalks and stuff, I always beg to put them in later just because if not, we end up replacing it happen.
Drive over, okay.
So. Good question.
Anything else commissioners? Okay. All right, uh, commissioners, I'll ask for a motion to open a public hearing on this item.
Little move.
I have a second. All in favor? Hi, opposed? We are now in public hearing. So we'll ask, uh, anyone from the public that wants to uh, give comments to approach the podium and give your name and address and give us three minutes.
That's Jason Green, two nine nine two west, fourteen hundred south. Uh, I'm here with Quincy Adams, sales of peace on forty eight hundred, uh, west, eighteen hundred south. And the way it was designed before, and that's how the subdivision got the connectivity of roads and the extra housing. Was to connect that down and then come out onto eighteen hundred that would connect to eighteen hundred frequencies. But making that corner, you're kind of putting in, adding some blind corners to the situation. All the trash from that subdivision is going to go right on to the farm then. From, because it kind of corners right there at the end. And you know, Utah is kind of built on the grid system for a reason. To see here to file and get things going that way. And so I definitely think that there needs to be a redesign in that part. You're cutting off that. Any future subdivisions right there on that forty eight hundred west.
Uh, uh, Director Grover, uh, for this hearing, we're not looking at design, right? We're just looking at the rezone for the lots.
Yeah, you're just looking at the rezone. Um, conceptually, you'll look at, you know, some things um, design related, but it's just conceptual. When it gets to the subdivision level, that's when you start looking at the specifics.
I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of the process. So this is, this is only a part of, of that larger process. So I hope that helps you in the future. Um, we'll, we'll take comment and any questions or concerns there are, we'll address them after the, after the, uh, public hearing is, is over. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Everything they're talking about to the west, I just don't want to lose productivity of road for any future development that if I decide to do, I don't want to lose that. Map reads to come online up. I don't want to lose access to Walker Slough. For anybody else who needs development, decide to build parks and on that ground or things like that, keep developments for sales, but they don't lose that by doing this stuff. In fact, so the thing drawn is official.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure, but we can, having come back, the, the public hearing is over. Yeah, so. Well, he's, yeah, little different public. Okay. Well, we'll, we'll get that after the public process. So anyone else like to make public comment? Okay. Commissioners, I'll, uh, ask for a motion to adjourn from public hearing. So do I have a second? All in favor? I oppose. We are now out of public hearing, so we'll address some of the concerns that were brought up. Pat, Charlie, uh, Felix, that's, that's up for you guys. And, and we do want to hear from Pat because I think Commissioner McCormick has some questions or concerns for him.
Great. Um, I want to address Mr. Adams' question about losing access to office loop. We were pretty concerned, uh, about that as well. We wanted to make sure that, uh, the roads going to the west stub at the edge of the property so that it went straight into Mr. Adams' property and you can pick it up and still get access there. The long-term goal along Walker Slough is a, a green space, but not only drainage, drainage is definitely a long-term goal. Our engineering division uh, as well as, uh, economic development, uh, department, they're looking at trying to find some funds to do a master drainage plan uh, for the area because we know as hard surface comes in and smaller lot sizes come in, you're going to get a lot more flow that needs to go somewhere. Uh, Walker Slough is an obvious, uh, location for it to go. Uh, which is the question is, is how wide, uh, or what kind of improvements are going to be needed, whether it be pipe or heat daylighted. Um, those are all things that need to be in the future. Um, however, uh, long-term goal, as you see from the master plan, is that you've got, uh, green cordially with a trailer going through that. Uh, we want to make sure that, um, access to that is that we provide it to the property. Whether or not a street crosses the slough is a, is a different question. Right now, we were just kind of thinking it'd be nice to have a, a straight shot from forty seven hundred west to forty three hundred west on a bike or mom with a stroller without having to cross the road. Uh, but, um, I work, we don't live right there. We're not moving to the ground. So if there's a needed connection that it goes now. Uh, we've actually identified one, uh, place that a street connection could potentially go on. Um, and I think that would, we would need to, uh, work with Mr. Adams.
We, we would be considering at least one mid-block north-south, right? At least one, that, that's pretty contiguous.
Between, uh, forty seven.
Seven and forty-three.
So yeah, if you look at the map, you could see a, a very thin dashed line right between. Now, this is one of the considerations that Felix and I are bringing to you. Uh, what is your guideline? Because this is really just balancing of interests. Now that dash line is in no way survey level accurate. It, it probably won't swing that far. Probably won't swing that far to the, uh, west. Thank you. Perfect, perfect. Um, as you see there, it probably won't swing that, that far. Sorry, to the east, probably there, there's, uh, actually some property right in there.
Yep, Charlie, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Do you have a way of pointing at it on there? Rest of, rest of slow people like me?
Right here. Yeah, so right by the, uh, where the zero is on eight, the last zero in eighteen hundred, there's a dash line that runs right under that.
It's not straight. It kind of bows.
Curves, yep. And our first approach in looking at where that road could possibly go, and I want to make sure it's very clear, this is possible. Uh, uh, opportunities, not mandatory requirements. As, as landowners in the area choose to develop, these are the opportunities we're going to try and uh, latch on to and work with the landowners, just like we have with Pat to get some good straight connections. So you look at that road, start down on twenty-two hundred south and head to the north. Um, and it makes a pretty good swing to the east right above the school property. Uh, we've actually identified probably a better location for it to expand just straight north. Um, pending, you know, uh, good, um, relations with the landowners. So I don't know that the commissioners have any interest in, uh, doing, um, any kind of mandatory, um, anything. So it's just a matter of working with the landowners in the area and get future street right away. Down on twenty-two hundred south, where you can see that dash line, we, you're going to be hearing, uh, a rezone in your next meeting. Uh, about that property there, and they are actually putting the road right where we're asking them to, to the north, where they're part of their property. So that said, as you go to the north, as you look at how that road transacts the block, uh, that bounds between fourteen hundred and eighteen hundred and forty-seven hundred to ten, forty-three hundred. That entire block, it's not really a block. That's, uh, four square blocks, just to make sure we're clear on that. And if we put a street right in the middle of that, that would put a street in the middle of a, a Walker Slough, uh, pathway core. So, uh, we thought, you know, it might be actually nice to see just a straight linear pathway, park corridor there uh, for the future. But if you would rather see good street connections through there, there's a balancing that which you can be. Um, as you look to the east, most of that slough up until you get to Pat's other property, most of that slough is buried. Uh, running for people's backyard. So it's not likely we're going to see a pathway going along that portion of the slough. Chances are they run along the, uh, the, a pathway runs along the curve and the block we're talking about, and then meets up with a pathway on eighteen hundred.
What, west of forty-three?
That's right. Uh, well, I'm, I'm actually talking east with a forty-three. Uh, meets up, uh, so instead of going through where Felix's mouse is, we would probably just have to follow eighteen hundred. Uh, until it winds up with, uh, one of the next major roads and then we get it back to the north on vacant property to follow us.
Yeah, because there's nothing to follow up here. It's all buried, at least forty-three hundred. Yeah, yeah. We're, we're thinking the same thing, just saying it differently.
Okay.
Between up here, between, between this subdivision, the, uh, Mr. Burns is, is from, from thirty-five down. It's not buried in this first part from right down from thirty-five, but somewhere where Charlie's hand is there, it is where it, it's underground. And then it's underground all down right here. It's open.
Yeah, there are a few homes, uh, that right next to, uh, forty-three hundred that sort of the, the slough goes through their property.
Goes behind.
Yeah, I want to make sure it's very clear, anyone who may be listening, that, you know, that county can't go and take, uh, property to pathways. We have to work with landowners and if they choose not to, uh, uh, do it, uh, in the meantime, that's fine. We've got a long memory and so we can work on getting it in the future and find other opportunities to get access to it. At forty-three. Now, so the thought is
Probably can't go out.
That's right. So there, there are some homes right here in this area right here. Uh, and until those landowners choose to subdivide or, or redevelop or, um, sell to the county, whatever it may be. Um, may not get access through there, uh, for a little while unless they really want to see a part of it on to their property and maybe if you want to donate it. We do have impact fees that we're working, uh, to amend or impact fee facilities plan to include the Walker Slough on it. So we potentially purchase that property and build, uh, a trail in the future. Whole point is, is to keep opportunities for the community open without being overly intrusive on those private properties.
The opportunity for, because the, the, it's still open from forty-three hundred west to forty-seven and beyond. And then the other leg coming in from the north over here is, and from fourteen hundred coming all the way over to where it comes together. Yeah, just that's all still open. So then that does kind of throw then there becomes a little bit of a competitiveness between a roadway and a pathway in that block between four, uh, yeah, between fourteen and eighteen and forty-three and forty-seven.
Right. Uh, my opinion, and Felix and I really discussed this, just our opinions, we don't live there. And so our opinions are you could probably forego the more south connection right there. Uh, as you look, uh, as that, where that roadway continues to go, potential roadway continues to go to the north. Uh, there's another portion of that or arm of that slough. Uh, and we'd love to work with the Martinis who own that property to, uh, see if we can get that pathway branch, uh, heading to, uh, the north. And so our recommendation would be to favor the pedestrian accessibility. So making sure that all of the developments that are happening in the area as time goes on is accessing that slough, uh, with pedestrian accesses. Just like the red line that Felix showed you on our side of, uh, the western side of that spot. Just keep people on something. And then what people parched down. But that's your choice. I'm going to make sure that's, that's fair. We does choose that that's our right. Yeah, so if you, you go back to the street. By the way, Felix's first rezone, so really great job, uh, on this. It's so the, the dark line, um, just as staff, we've identified some opportunities to get some road connectivity through here. Um, uh, Felix mentioned that, uh, this is a neighborhood, he, he, uh, mentioned a collector in the spoken set neighborhood road. We're talking a sixty foot wide right of way, uh, with maximum thirty-two feet of asphalt going through there. And so it's a small road, those little jogs and curves uh, help cars go slower on every bunch of roads. But as you look to the, uh, a little bit further to the, uh, west, you could see that seventeen hundred and going back up into sixteen hundred and that angle up is, is on Mr. Adams' property. We wanted to make sure he had plenty of opportunity to get a road through that portion of there and develop on either side. And, and we didn't have the chance to, to speak with them before. Just trying to, trying to make sure that it wasn't blocked off so that we still had access.
Just so that everybody is kind of up to speed with where, with where the, with where the water lies. If you, if you look at where the, where the walkers lose outlined, that's the southern. If you will, southern part that comes, you know, from way up above thirty-five hundred, but is buried cleared to forty-three. Then it's open again where it's, where it's, where the black line is. Then the other part portion, if you come back up here to fourteen hundred south right here on fourteen hundred south, just where the, where the blue dotted line is below where the, the triple black is. It's, it's the other part of the wa, of that slough comes in right there and you can follow it down through where it goes and comes to the Y way back over here, uh, west of, um, Smart Fields. After Adams' property.
I agree with, um, what Felix, uh, offered in the staff report. I think this could provide a really important community amenity. Um, as, uh, as an open linear park and a trail and active recreation area. Um, Mr. Adams' property is and he actually, uh, that property actually, the adjacent property actually battles both sides of that slough. And so, um, understandably, I don't know, seeing things concerned about getting that access. The first comment, um, I, I didn't fully understand, uh, the connections on the western side. Um, we are requiring a connection to the west and we're requiring sixteen hundred south. To also be installed. Uh, I, my suggestion to you guys would be to require that sixteen, and I think it's in the, um, either the findings or requirements, required that portion to be installed all the way to the furthest street, if not all the way to the edge, uh, the western edge of the subdivision. The challenge Mr. Burns is going to have on that is he doesn't own that portion of property. So we'd have to work with that to, to figure that part of the road out.
So were you suggesting that it end? Your suggestion?
It'd be most ideal, just so we're not pushing a full road on another developer, uh, when Martinez choose to do the rest of the, uh, develop the rest of their property. Would be most ideal. Um, and maybe we could work with, uh, with Mr. Burns to put together a phase in plan. Uh, where maybe he's not developing the lots that are on that, uh, that far western uh, road until that road can go in.
On sixteen hundred, you're talking about the west part of sixteen hundred.
You don't have to, because the develop, or sorry, the subdivision ordinance will require it, but, um, here's, here's the rub when it comes to concept plans, at least according to our, our, uh, legal division and William would know. Uh, see it differently. It was actually according to Eric's, and that explains to me. The concept plan error of interpreting it follows the same rules of error interpreting the ordinance. It's always in favor of the mind. And so if the concept plan has something on it that seems super conceptual and super flexible. In every case, we'll have to care on, uh, the landowner's, uh, side. And so if, for example, the concept plan shows sixteen hundred ending prematurely. It'd be very easy if I were the applicant to argue, no, that clearly, uh, shows that, uh, sixteen hundred. And so my suggestion, if you're comfortable with it and again, uh, we can hear from Pat on the spots, uh, would be to just put that as a requirement of development, that it gets extended for the far west. So, or some other mutually agreeable term from between them. Maybe it's a, an escrow for some. Maybe it's a an escrow for some period.
Okay. Question, if if we've addressed, I think we've addressed and maybe, you know, Mister Burns is aggressive a little bit now, but I think we've. Kind of addressed both of the concerns of the folks that have spoke. My, I've got a question. On the north side of sixteen hundred, on the west side of forty-three, there's two lots there. Now, are they or are they not part of this this development?
They are part of this subdivision, part of this. Okay, so I say subdivision, should probably table that or couch that to when he applies with seven. As you guys have um looked at, well, you've looked at both of these other projects, the uh Stagecoach as well as Anselme Acres. Uh Wood and Style. Uh both of those projects took a slightly different approach with um lot development standards. And so many acres said the concept plan is pretty well locked in, it's pretty well certain level accurate. And so we're just gonna say the concept plan rules on what the lot development standards are. If you remember, Steve mentioned. Probably need to make sure we get site setbacks uh taken care of and so. We've actually done a heading on um on Mister uh. Burns's project here, or sorry, on Mister Burns' stage porch project, uh we actually. Took a little bit more of a flexible approach and we wrote in a lot of developments, they're right under the petition. Uh which the county commission should be seeing in a couple of weeks. And so you can see either the image dictates what need, how that subdivision needs to lay out. Or the image is flexible and conceptual in nature and we've got the rules that. And uh that's Felix and I looked at this, uh we we took the same approach that we did with stage porch. Just uh recommending certain lot development standards and stuff before. Just go even more or less as part of the development agreement and allow flexibility. But maybe the road needs to move a little bit, maybe in order to put a half foot rather on uh there, he's gotta move sixteen hundred a little bit to the south. A little bit of flexibility to. This burns to actually get a good product.
So. On that sixteen hundred south. And in order to to keep it aligned with sixteen hundred south on the east side of forty-three hundred. There's. I mean, isn't that, isn't that a, it it would certainly. Be preferred by me to keep those in line with each other. I'm presuming that would be how the county would feel as well.
A a straight line to me.
Yeah, a full intersection, not an offset intersection.
At forty-three hundred. So.
The way that it looks right now never works.
Yeah, uh having a full intersection instead of an offset, yes.
No, it 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 just is, it's just that when Charlie mentioned offsetting. The road a little bit in order to accommodate the the space or the area there, I I started thinking, well, we don't want to lose that line.
Oh, I I okay, I understand. Yeah, no, if if we were to offset it, it would be um to the west. After it already kicks up in subdivision.
Okay.
So that, I mean.
I see, it it would curve one south or north, or it's, yeah, okay.
Or we could work with Mister Burns to maybe squeeze it in on the on the section line on on the um east side of forty-three. So does the Ranselme and then maybe swings just a little bit further south, uh exactly forty, thirty-three feet further south. So there's writing the exact section line and then Mister. Which that may actually be a a better option. Yeah, and it puts less onus on uh the land over to the north, which right now is a school district, but. From what we understand, they're not.
Now. Another concern, not not, it's not even really a concern. The north-south road I get because of the conversion of of the the way that the the path might play its way out. But then if you get on the other side, on the uh south side of eighteen hundred south. The property there mid-block where that road might be and as short as it would be leading to the school. The it's not on that, you'd have to, you'd have to drag this a little bit further.
You're talking about the uh street that runs between forty-three and forty-seven.
Right, because my, I I mean, I'm not sure who the property owner. Was north of. North of the new high school, but I understand that that it might be Weber School District. Uh where the. North of the high school and probably the corners would come together on the northwest corner of the high school and the property that they've just acquired. I'm not sure if that's true or not, but it may be.
So right at the northwest corner of the high school property is that we were saying.
Yeah, which is where the road, I mean, ideally would have. Been, but we at least got a pathway there. So. Okay.
Yeah, I'll look at land ownership and see if we need to make any adjustments.
Commissioners.
One, one last question. I didn't, normally there is a recommendation for dark sky lighting to meet all of the. Requirements, would that be a good thing to include?
Yeah, I think it was in the staff report. If we missed it in the uh. Recommendations.
See in the motion recommendation, was it in the staff report? It's there. Okay, I'll put it in the, I'll add it to the motion.
Mister Burns. Anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't think so. Charlie did a pretty good job. Um. Yeah, as far as the sixteen hundred or anything like that, more than willing to work with. Whatever works the best, we're happy to.
Commissioners, any questions or comment? All right. Thank you. Okay. All right, commissioners, um barring any dis- further discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve item two point one CMA twenty twenty-three dash zero three. The. Second motion model. With the addition of um we'll call item J. Uh two thousand dollar a lot minimum contribution or in-kind contribution. Um or as agreed by, well, as agreed by with by the Parks District and developer. Um item K uh that dark sky lighting is uh installed or dark dark sky compatible lighting. Um item L. That uh sixteen hundred is is extended to the far west edge of the development. And this rest recommendation is based on the findings found in our packet.
Very good. Uh have a motion, I'll ask for a second. All right, we'll do a roll call on this one. Commissioner Clance.
Hi.
Commissioner Novell.
Hi.
Commissioner Wicker.
Hi.
Commissioner uh Andrea.
Hi.
Commissioner McCormick.
Hi.
Chair votes I as well. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Looks like uh next item on our agenda. Is uh to open up for any public comment on items that were not on tonight's agenda. Anybody like to give us a bit of their mind? Too late, it's gone. Thanks, Pat. Okay. All right, seeing none, next item, uh Planning Director's Report, Director Grover.
I don't have any comments at this time, nothing uh to report.
I apologize, I missed one, but we'll go back to it. Uh remarks from our planning commissioners. Any remarks, anything new?
I I just have a question, just based on um scheduled meeting for the commissioners this morning, was um single tree on their agenda?
Yes. Not, the single tree was not. Um it was Anselme Acres. That was on there and that one did get approved.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was the reason, correct, correct.
Okay.
Refresh my memory, which one was single tree?
High school. Twenty-two.
Okay, uh Buck. Chad Buck, right, is the developer. I believe that's the one that had connectivity to the high school that we stopped to work the fence issue out with the high school. Okay. Anything else, commissioners?
Uh just a little plug, uh for the flood, this is a county uh. Full speed ahead on looking at waterways and. Ditches and.
Yes, um fortunately, we cleaned out a lot of those. Um and did a bunch of maintenance this fall. Um which is gonna help, but right now we are monitoring, we're looking at everything that's happening right now and. Um we're concerned, especially this weekend. Um you know, what happens and obviously mother nature is gonna dictate a lot of of what happens, but. Um Joe Hadley in our roads department is um vigilantly looking at things. Um this last weekend was a nightmare um for our roads department because we had. Flooding happening out west. Um we had roads, uh rocks falling on the north um divide. That we were trying to push out and then we had snow falling up in the Ogden Valley. And Powder Mountain, it was a complete blizzard and whiteout. And so. We had all three things happening this weekend and. Uh my hats off to um our public works uh department because they just did an amazing job. Um right now we have uh, we're concerned too because at the dam, they're gonna be closing that. And so the only way to get around um is gonna be going around. The dam or going up North Ogden Divide, so we have um a a loader park right at the base of North Ogden. Divide. There was a rock that came down um. Just, it was today and it was one of the biggest rocks that we have seen. Um come down off of there and so we're we're very concerned during.
Smash the loader?
No, it didn't smash the loader. It 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 came down and so um we were. We had the the loader out there trying to um get it off.
Just just one more comment. I went down and checked the Little Weaver the other day and it appears that they opened it up. Out to the west, I'd just like to. Put some kudos out there for that because that that is a big deal with the new spillway out there, so.
For sure, and right now our engineering division and. With opening the headgates and that, we have a very um quick um open communication timeline. So um it is, it it's great um that way. It can, it can happen within um a few, a few minutes. I got a question on that. Does that spill before the DWR dams or after?
The spillway?
Yeah.
It's there just east of my house.
Spills before that. It'll back up one way or the other.
Yeah, so that that water will go out to the northwest.
Yeah.
It it will go to DWR via the Weber River.
Via the Weber River, but it'll still eventually get there.
Right, yeah.
It'll still be held up by the dams, DWR's dams.
It will.
Gets deep enough.
It's deep. Just get a front end loader out there, I'll take care of that for.
There is some areas of concern um with water backup along the railroad tracks. Um Joe and his crew are trying to get that pipe upsized. So that we don't have that issue, but right now I'm just trying to keep it as clean as possible.
Cool, all right, thank you.
I don't know, if you want any more information, but I can go on. Commissioners, anything else? Uh motion for adjournment. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, I forgot the most important part. Liam, any comments? No, but thank you. Oh, gosh, I apologize for that. That's what happens when you sit there and I can't, I, you know.
You're just excited about your work session.
Yeah.
Gonna talk about lights.
Exactly. All right, now I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
I.
All right, we're in adjournment. We'll adjourn to our work session. Thank you.
It'll be an interesting two months.
You can project this.
Yeah. Yeah, you need to connect me in that as well. However, you guys do that. So it's recorded on Zoom.
So let's see. You can probably.
Hey, thanks. I jumped and then I just gonna let Pat. Explain one of those growths that we've already seen.
Charlie doing a good job. Was concerned about street. Feel it was toward the west.
Okay, maybe we should.
Well, honestly, that very long doesn't pick up a lot of copper. So we might get like. So how, so what else does he have? Are you talking total lots, total amount of lots? So this is what that would look like. Essentially looking at that. We'll. Seventeen to be right behind these houses. Yeah, as I got to those researches, expecting that there's not been a plan, there's not been a a survey or anything. That looks to me like maybe they had the fence in the wrong spot, sixty feet to the north and they just picked it up somehow. Because the uh the dates at which those parts were that parts were was created was a different date. I sent it this, maybe a lot more than adjusting. Show on the roads now than housing. Really seventeen hundred where this comes down. So this is the twenty. That's their ten acre. So, so essentially. I said that there's lots here. So we had to go through. And there's. Right here. Yeah, seventeen twenty five. Guess we're ready to start our work session. I just wanted to talk for about an hour.
Uh, Joe, Joe went up there last night, he worked home last night, so. That's the rocks that fell on the divide last night.
Did they just put some dynamite in and blow them off?
Wow.
Loader. Do it, but they got into.
During the last three or four years. Or is that on the other side, on the north? You'll never believe what happened, so I'm not even going to tell you.
See you later.
Somehow they went to Ann's home address and not to, which is also on Twenty Fourth Street. And not to the courthouse, which is on Twenty Fourth Street. Well, I don't blame her. Doesn't matter, you just need to start them, just give them, okay. It's their bread. No, Ann brought it in, go on, you walked in the crowd. Well, they're sending another order, so Rich staying up there for that, I'm gonna bring that in.
Oh, good. Good, I gotta eat again.
Do the reason. Well, that's something completely. Is they, did they listen?
No.
Oh, I don't, I don't shop, I don't buy from Jimmy John's, I want somebody to buy it for me, I own eat Jimmy John's because their parking lot in Salt Lake City, and this has a planning, uh, planning. There we go. Their parking lot in Salt Lake City is just out before south. And they refused when they purchased to contribute to the landowner association for a parking lot in Brooklyn. They did, you wanna do their share, that's right, you wanna do their share. So the neighboring land and for whatever reason, there was some kind of a a people or there was an illegal obligation for them to, previous owners and building had always participated. But apparently they, when they took up the property, the obligation didn't run with the land and so they said no thanks and they put barricades between their lot and the association right next door. And you can say next door, it is right there, it's all the same thing, they just put barricades, uh, and then in response to that the association, the owner's association right next door, which has a couple of large. They put a chain on the top of the followers that say, uh, private. Jimmy John's lot pool, pull into the other parking lot, I go get off on the streets and all go around and boom, get the parking lot. I hop over the chain, I walked in, I purchased, I was no more than sixty seconds. And I was like, I have not been in there long enough, whoever put this ticket over here just got done. And I looked around and there was a couple of people in the truck right on the other side of the parking lot there and I just looked at them and I to verify that I don't have the obligation to pay. Yeah.
Isn't it franchise?
I don't know.
So you can break up the ones anywhere but there.
Oh, I see.
Yes, you don't have to continue.
An organization that's given parking, people thought like Jimmy John's fast.
Wow, really?
There was a student that got a ticket and it's president, I took it, I was going to meet with the president and it said, hey, I just got a ticket, I was trying to get you whatever and he went, no, it was actually Waldo, and that's got got the ticket, went to meet with the president, but hey, I've got the ticket. The president hadn't paid it for them to go.
Oh, no, it's not private.
They're both certified face officer. It's not in the sharing mood. Alright, so I don't even remember what order I had stuff on the agenda, but um I'm looking at the um Western Weber um code. Um, just a couple of of things I wanted to show you guys, just some changes that I've been working on, you're probably not going to see it in your packet. Um, I didn't get into any more lighting, um I took Christian Andrea's uh word for it and said, you know what, maybe this is something we talked about. Um, under application requirements, we did talk about uh splitting out rezone applications uh requirements into two categories, one is mandatory application requirements. And then one is optional requirements. Um, and so here's what I did, uh, you could see here, you've got um so an application for rezoning shall be prepared with following information basically, and then you've got uh these numbers right there. Required is an application that's legally authorized, um it's a conceptual street, pathway, grill and accessway or alley connectivity. But it's not a concept, I want to see how their future subdivisions can do that, but show us where the streets and the pathways are. I hope what this does is really compels um developers, they think really hard about property connectivity and street connectivity before they think about lot. Well, they, that's not about lot layout first.
Yeah.
What I mean, yep, and then we got in there and said, alright, well, let's try and help you get the same kind of lot layout, but we need something different. Now, I'd say need, uh, it's probably a lot. It just really kind of comes down to you guys' preference on those smaller residential streets, the general plan at different states. Then the um, the the smaller residential street being more terminal types of streets, but I'd say if you can get an opportunity to have some connections with traffic calming curves and stuff like that, you should get it. Um, because before, when you, when you match on the uh the accelerator, cause you came to a T in the road and do a stop sign. Yeah, you're just putting that much more um uh in that into the rest. But don't lose your train of thought, man, that, okay, these two lots that are part of the result. So my team, okay, alright, because remember when we saw this before, that was partly open space, it was going to not allow them to be able to develop all that, so this was needing that last dock connected, so. I can't, there's one more he does. That's one thing I really like to talk to Pat is every time we talk, it's one more, oh, I own that. Well, I'm gonna go talk to the guy. Yeah, 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 he's character, I should like. So far, I think they're doing that pretty good. The number one is the connectivity plan, number two. Open space planning, including land, infrastructure or monetary donations intended to begin to the park district, or we could have purpose of providing parks or. That's not even in your rezone uh checker right now. And then number or three, sorry, four is a narrative explaining the the planned or future access to coronary secondary water facilities and wastewater disposal. So rather than having to go to the water district and getting, well the sewer district is also have others, uh, because they're saying we only issue will serve letters, we don't issue, we might maybe one day serve something if we ever ask. So we're gonna have a hard time with the requirements, so I'm just popping that out, but I do put it back in under supplemental requirements below uh on the per se, so. Uh, and those are optional in some circumstances, I'll walk you through that just a second. I'm not on your page. And so I'm, I'm I'm off on my own. So I didn't get the chance to push this out to you guys um in the. So I'm on screen right now.
Some parts of this are, if, what part of this?
Um, so section one oh two dash four or five dash four, and this is rezone application requirements.
You're in a updated version of our.
Okay, so green double underline. And then green double strike out means.
Everybody should just do it.
Um, okay, so if a proposed rezone may be required to be accompanied by a concept development plan according to section one oh two dash five dash five in this chapter. The development plan in lieu of the concept development plan may also be required. I still don't know what I'm gonna do with that one here. Because in in the number of cases, you don't actually have to have a concept. Um, especially if you come with a decent street layout. Uh, and we know what we're gonna get regardless of what, where you choose to put the bottlenecks, you know what kind of product we're gonna get. May not be a need for a concept plan with the one base code that we're looking at just a minute, um, there's no need to do a concept. Cause we're saying your buildings are gonna look like this, they're gonna be on this location on the property. And then you have all the flexibility you need to locate what you want. Okay. And then another requirement, the applicant's shout provided narrative explaining, you know, the applicant's vision, um, I changed most of these things here to not be questions, understand questions as part of the code, so it's changed it to be requirements, they need to address these. And then supplemental application requirements for the rezone, but this needs to be just a section for on the uh proposal that you guys have. This is supplemental application requirements for large master planned areas. Or areas being rezoned to the destination recreational resort zone. I'm suggesting we change that. They just say supplemental application requirements. All of the supplemental information under destination recreational resorts. The main reason that we're working on outlets, you get a big master plan development out there, you're gonna wanna see a, for example um recreation facilities plan. Um, so the bigger the project, the more important some of these things are. Uh, because the developer is coming in with a uh magnitude scale. They can produce this kind of information and it really help us with a really great master plan. As opposed to doing these ones and twos, um, you know, twenty eight or subdivisions. So um, this says, so number one, it says for a recent application of a large master planned area or an area for destination recreational resort zone. The additional information in subsection three uh below, so sorry, C three of this section shall be submitted, so that this makes it a mandatory requirement for all this information down here to be submitted.
Large master planned areas or the.
And then part two says for a rezone other than those specified in that paragraph. Uh, after submission of the initial reason application, the additional information in that section, C three. Of the section shall be submitted if requested by the planning director, planning commission or county commission at any time during the rezone procedure. Well, it gets to you guys and you guys are like, you know what, I really need to see a traffic impact analysis from a traffic engineer before I'm comfortable moving forward on that, uh, table, ask the applicant, go get it. A lot of the things that you can do. Okay, so that, that's really how I kind of separate those things out into mandatory versus optional. Um, most of the time, we're gonna catch this stuff from a typical rezone uh developer. Uh, say Pat comes in, if we see, you know what, we need to see what your emergency services plan is on all that property you're gonna develop on the west side of the river and south side of the tracks, because right now you go one way and then one way out, we're gonna ask you for that kind of a plan um before it even gets to you guys. Which we are doing that, okay. Well, in this case, it's what, what is the plan for emergency services? He's told us all the plan is, it's to build a bridge over the river and cut that road straight into sixteen hundred. And I, well, I do it. And uh yeah, um, well, he's, he's working with um flagship, if you remember, they came in and talked to us when we were doing the they're looking at thousands of phones, I should up there, so I'm not, not crying for them. They're looking at thousands of homes, I'm sure, out there, so I'm not crying for them. I am rethinking, um, let's go down to our news. First off. Commission did, we're doing seventy acres today, but there was some static. We gave us some static of not having ordinances in place before or we have reason. I told him at the meeting, I said, look, you're not alone on that concern, the planning commission said. We'd rather not have a lot of this stuff before very completely without, had to be ordinances placed. Um, for trying to be fair to everyone and also make order of his, and I think he stood on principle and opposed to Dr. Coke when he voted against the reason. But the others give orders favors. If that's.
He does realize that what we've seen is what was going on before, or you know, it'd be kind of beginning. I mean, try to be fair to him, but like, see where that could be confusing, but.
His finding was, I'd rather not get too far with the time mission on cream. He prepares, which is fair, yeah, and it's just policy perspective, so.
You know, it was kind of a kick in the sea. Just saying.
Uh, to be fair, also, Gage mentioned this in a work session, or Commissioner Ford mentioned this in a work session about a month ago. He's, uh, it was about promontory, he's a little concerned about doing any kind of rezon for promontory until he knows that we've got the ordinances in place. For the neighboring landowners who are doing, potentially doing residential development out there. Um, to be particularly protected from the manufacturing, but they're putting in the prominent white line, yeah, sorry, flat line, they're the.
It's also also known as.
Yeah.
And I, and I agree, but I, I, you can also convey this fact. I don't wanna see that come to a, come to a halt or a loss for the county, that's too important. But, um, you know, we'll, we'll do what we have to do to make everybody happy. From our standpoint, but yeah.
I appreciate that, and yeah, I'll, I'll definitely make sure I mention that, that. Based on some of the static that we're getting from the commission on the state of the time that is. Think I'm going to, with your guys' permission, get the R one fifteen zone in front of you guys. We got a quick, in fact, I probably, you know, everything that's in here that we don't have, but there's been no concern from you guys on into a document and get it on the next. Just to get something adopted, so if you guys have problems with what's here, uh, let me know pretty, pretty quickly.
That's what everybody's.
Yep, Sarah. I'm not gonna put any kind of lighting in there, so keep that for later. That, that being said, I'm wondering if R one fifteen zone is the right name.
I am too.
I'm thinking. We're looking at this by taking the entire, the gross acreage and dividing it by fifteen, saying that's your density.
And if we leave it at fifteen, it's always gonna be a challenge. Yeah, our, our fourteen point five, that's fifty.
And we could do that, my take on this is just a little, no, no, my take on this is just a little bit different, I don't think we're regulated based off of lot size. No, I think we've come up with a calculation for density. And so my suggestion is we stop looking at this from a traditional zone, and we start looking at it as. This is your density, no matter how you lay your roads out, no matter how many, much open space and hearts you get, you're probably not gonna, gonna lose lots unless everything is lower than six thousand square feet.
Wow.
That gives the developer all of this assurance that they get all the lots. They're not gonna come in later on and we're gonna say, ooh, sorry, it looks like your attention, uh, facility needs to be three times as big and losing four lots. You know, they're not gonna see that, they'll just be able to make it the estimates. To a reasonable degree, I don't know, if I brought you guys all six thousand square foot logic, probably would say, as much as we love all that open space, I don't love it that much. In some cases, yes.
Yeah, but I'd still rather see that mixed up with something like what Pat has on stage. Rather than they create market wise is better.
And if we go this direction, this can be a version of the, what was I calling it during the general plan, of the noncluster cluster subdivision. It may not, it may not have some of the finer points of what we have in the general plan, but I think that's okay, this is a really good start, and we may find this a better tool than what the general plan calls for in terms of that. So my question for you guys is, do you only wanna see this happening with the R one fifteen? Or would you be okay if R one twelve and R one ten also is like?
Yeah, it would. We're not, it's a straight line, no, to end up with something different than what's in everybody's opinions when ten, twelve, and fifteen.
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking the same thing.
It's not to have a bottom threshold, which we do.
Six thousand square feet.
Then it's not like the R one ten is going to get smaller, smaller lots, you know, and just get a flexibility that is about maximize the, the land usage.
Now, just based on history and personal knowledge, I think, my, my disagree with what we're talking about, but I want to hear from everybody, why you guys. Well, I think it's, it's less, it needs to be simplified. Yeah. Because in past traditional, somebody says fifteen, they're talking fifteen thou. And ninety foot running with the rest of the land. Except for the older subdivision, older. You know, what, what we get hung up on is, and then we all go from time to time, we get hung up on the intent of the law versus the law, and you know, the intent here, the, the, my intent is to be more flexible with this. Than when it was to say fifteen thousand or fourteen five. Um, because that five hundred square feet isn't a closet in these new homes, right, the biggest they are, so. In fact, we do R one fourteen point five.
Well, but they're also going to be large, larger lots in those zones, and as long as those like, like Felix had in his report today, you need to specify, you're in an R one fifteen zone, even though you want a three acre lot, doesn't mean you get the three acre privileges of a different zone, you get the privileges of R one fifteen, just larger, so I think this is wise because you're stating the flex, you're stating the average, and then you have the permissions consistent with subdivision. Not with the lot size.
That's exactly, and we're not misleading anyone by thinking this is just a, there is something flexible.
We, we could just put flex in front of it.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, so what I had on the flex fifteen, actually, that's probably just one. And ten and twelve. Okay. Now, if we do it for the ten and twelve, we do have some properties that are on R one twelve and R one ten. And so we might need to have a ten flex and R one ten, a twelve flex and R one twelve. I hate having all those, I'd much rather just go and rezon all of those other properties, they're not gonna be nonperforming, because we already know they're gonna be, they need the minimum threshold of either ten or twelve. But that just, we have to send a notification to everyone who's out there, it's just, it puts a lot of onus on us to, yes.
They'll say box, though, it'll say our, whatever, flex twelve and R one twelve will be in that same box with the same privileges and everything underneath it.
That's kind of what I'm thinking, yeah.
Doesn't complicate, complicate the coding.
No, in fact, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because I wasn't quite sure if we wanted to just call the flex zone or have both options, and I, I think I like both options. So it'd be R one fifteen or fifteen flex, uh, essentially would be what these are, twelve flex or ten flex. And then if you don't want that much density, so it's really just a density calculation at this point, if you don't want twelve or ten, uh, to be the calculation, don't rezon anyone to that, essentially. Okay, good, that, that helps, so I'll just do this consistently throughout, and that will help our lot development standards section here. Work a little better.
So they're here, we're okay with that, right?
Did they deliver to hands? Why wouldn't she?
She didn't.
They just set it on the.
So here under minimum lot area.
It's been that kind of thing.
I'll finally say, what you'll see next month is I'll find a way to have minimum lot area for a traditional fifty thousand square foot and a minimum lot area for a fifteen flex or fourteen five flex.
I think this is like, but I, what the commissioners are looking for as far as having the COVID twenty.
I think so, I think so too, okay. Um, let's see, highlight anything else in the.
Sweeten you up.
Okay. So, talk a little bit about parks and impacts. When a developer installs. We exact from it, so just to be sure we're all speaking the same language. Anytime the county requires a developer to do something with the.
I'm sorry.
And there are ways that the county can legally do that, um, and really, it's only when they are proposing to develop their land and get some higher and better use out of that land, a lot of what people. So once you can use the property for higher better use, that's the time when the county can say, okay, but you're creating impact on other parts of public infrastructure. The taking part? But this is.
Well, it's the not taking.
But yeah, well, and it, it, it's, you know, people say taking very legal, so. You just have to do a rough, so this is a taking. So I don't have to live by whatever's coming in. Anyway, um, so right now we're doing the part dimension, that's one. Uh, like Rick mentioned, once we get some kind of park requirement in our subdivision code. Uh, we'd probably knock down some of these barriers, so. What if the divider comes in and he proposes roads? He has to dedicate the road area to the county and install the road, those are both costs, the acreage of the land and the roadway. And it is very challenging for the landlord to come together and say, that is not, um, a reasonable expense. Because it is directly related to the project, it is roughly proportionate to the projects. So when, um, Mr. Burns has to make forty foot wide half width improvements to forty three hundred west. There's, there's no argument for him to make that make sense, that he's not, his impact isn't requiring a need for that to happen. If every landowner who developed the same thing, everybody would have the consistent amount of right away, consistent amount of, uh, street, uh, cross section layout. Unfortunately, we have to deal with things unlike in every other landlord basis, because not everyone is ready to develop or wants to develop. But the principle still is, the same thing falls in line for parks. Now, we still charge landlords, uh, people who want a full building permit, an impact fee for transportation, transportation impact. In order to create a transportation impact fee, you have to do an impact fee analysis and impact, impact the facilities plan, basically what that means is the county has to have a plan to build infrastructure with a certain period of time, the initiative window, to build infrastructure to minimize the detrimental effects of some of the new homes that are there. Now, maybe this isn't the forty three hundred west, uh, expansion right in front of Pat's private, this is his, the, the homeowners who are living in his subdivision act the same forty eight or eighty. And so this is then a, a, a possible cost to the county, for the county to use that, and go make those. So we have to have a plan for how we're gonna take the money, but what the money, how we're going to spend the money in a certain way. When we look at parks, we're in parks the same. So even though there's so many train impact. You can still exact something, we just need to figure out what that thing is. And it's probably, it may or may not be a DM room, and it may or may not be the two thousand. So just going, circling back to the two thousand dollar question. In our code, we currently have a requirement, so planning division may require the dedication to the county of not more than three percent of the gross area of the subdivision for parks, ocean spaces, and other fellow uses, uh, on such location. Uh, as approved by the, the planning commission, as indicated on the approved preliminary, that's a lot of words. Anyway, I just wanted to change that, uh, and come to the consensus on, all right, if we are going to do an exaction for parks that is directly proportionate to the developer's impact um, on just parks that have needed to serve their residents, that's, that's all we're asking for at the rezon. What is that? So we're not talking about making the better parts for other people, we're just saying, what is the value? The number, the population that you have moving into your subdivision. Put a price tag on how much it would cost to serve, now, I think two thousand dollars is a good number. Maybe we don't wanna ask this question right now, maybe we wanna save this for another time, but. The more I got thinking about, um, what Rick mentioned as far as maybe having some exaction requirements code. I think that's, that's true, we probably, we have to say it's roughly proportionate to the impact that that development is causing. And that is essentially related to the impact that that development has.
So you're calculating that based on headcount?
Um, you could, you could, now here's, here's where the struggle with this comes in. Calculating impact fees for parks. You have to have a level of service. How many people can work part served? I don't know, if it's standing room only, you probably cram a lot of people in there, but that sure deteriorates, that sure deteriorates your level of recreational. Uh, and so there is a value of people per square foot that a park needs to, um, provide, in order to provide a good recreational park experience.
Somebody's gotta have, yeah.
So those studies have been done, um, a lot of this comes down to, um, unity preference. So when we did our impact fee for trails, so this is different than looking at a pipe, we know we level the surface on a pipe, this, we know how much water can fit inside that pipe. And we know when we need to ask a developer to upsize the pipe, when we pay the hipper for the upsize, right? So that instead of the developer putting in an eight inch, we ask for a twelve inch, because we know we're gonna need more. And then we have other people pay impact fees to that upsize, right? To contain system, when you're looking at cars, it's a little bit more guesswork, and it really comes down to uh, what is the experience, uh, recreational experience that we want residents to have. At some point, if you say twenty acres per person. The landlord is gonna come back, the applicant's gonna come back and say, that is disproportionate. Um, but when we did our trail impact decapitations, we said currently we've got this many miles of trail to serve this many people, and fortunately, this many miles of trail both included inside of incorporated areas and outside. And it was a lot, and then we only served fourteen, fifteen thousand feet within the uncooperating. So we get a little bit of a benefit to some of the trails that have already been installed, like, I'm, well, actually, sorry, we don't get to count the stuff that's inside Austin City. But Austin City built all those trails on the, uh, mountain side, that's all in the incorporated area. So we say we have all these trails, and we've got this number of people, that is a lot of trail per person. And so our level of service is set by that, I can't remember how many feet per person it is. But, um, it's a lot, and we're saying we, in the future, by adopting these impact fees, I think actually, I think the impact fee study came back with the ability to charge five thousand dollars per home just for trails. And the commissioner said, let's cut them in half, I think we're doing twenty five hundred dollars. We had justification to charge five in order to maintain a consistent level of service with, of what is already there. Compared to the population, that's all.
And that's just an impact fee, that's one kind of impact.
That's right, when they, when they go to build, so. I'm kind of muddying the water here, but, um, point is, when you're looking at exactions, you've got two types of exactions. One is the one that you get for the project. One is the one you get for the system. One is the one that you get for the project, one is the one you get for the system. The impact fee act says that your system is what you can charge impact fees for. But your project, that's where you can get your exaction back to all your. So if the parks district says we need ten acres in order to serve a thousand people, not everybody's going to use the purpose, right? So ten acres per thousand residents, we know what that number is for this developer, and we can convert that number uh, to a monetary value. And just to sign that, and so I was thinking about just kind of re-crunching those numbers, I've got to sit down with him and figure out where the line is uh, from reasonable to unreasonable or disproportionate to proportionate. Um, the National Park Service has actually defined an acreage per person um, that they suggest is a, is a standard that can be used, it can be used on the local park level.
County is, is it, does it have any function?
Not yet.
So how are you going to give the existing people to pay their share?
So you, you won't with the, for the existing people?
So why should you all be on?
Well, here's the, here's the challenge, right? The challenge is that you can't charge the developer for an impact that is an existing deficiency. If the fact that the existing park doesn't make, or sorry, if the fact that the park does not currently exist, you can't charge an impact fee, that's why the park district hasn't adopted an impact fee yet, because that park doesn't exist. Now, fortunately, the creation of the park is being paid by some of these developers. And now, what's that, nine acre park is created, they can create an impact because now they have an established level service of a certain amount of acres per their people. That level service is going to kind of suck because that people was like, nine acres per, what do we have out there, eight thousand people or something like that? Eight or nine, seven or eight.
What I'm saying, even if it's four or five.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think it's better to go with the fee, it's not make it a dispute.
Yeah, I agree with you, uh, that way
parks will come, as the lots come, and they'll grow into you to one, if it needs to go up. In the future, we can go up, if you make your building permit fee so absorbent, it will be kind of like California.
Yeah.
They're paying as much for the California, their fees down there is the art of the land.
Yes.
Well, I think we're talking about different things here. We will, developers will pay for the infrastructure, but as soon as the parks district is set up and able to do an impact, they will do a building from that impact fee.
It's all goes on house by the end. Whether it's the developer paying, the buyer, the buyer's going to be, yeah.
Yes, essentially, but market drives what the cow sells for, so it's the cut into the developer, it's the developer.
He won't pay it. They'll jack it on.
The impact fee, but his development, the initial fee that we're asking for with, that we're putting into our.
Wherever you give me, seems right. The cat want to be worked away, Jim, who's that, let's not give them the input. The corporation did that, they passed it on, that's the we pay.
Well, in this instance, though, the, the housing is already built without market value and it, and so the more the developer pays to develop, the less he gets, and whether it's the, whether it's the homeowner or the developer, the market's going to determine how much that house sells for, there is a uh.
But if there's not enough, there isn't enough to develop.
Then they won't build, yeah. So, the um, the developer is paying for the infrastructure, and once the parks district has infrastructure, they will determine an impact fee that will go on the building permits, so one will be paid for um, before the plat is done, and then the other one will be paid for at building.
And, and then as many, you're taking an A one to an R fifteen, so you're getting three lots for, for, you know, for one essentially, and maybe even higher density than that on some instances like what Pat's doing. But, yeah, I mean, so it kind of is on both sides of that, to me, you're, you're ultimately somebody's going to pay. The guy that's buying the house is going to pay quite a bit.
He paid all of them, yeah.
Very, yes. Because bank, the.
That's what I'm saying, we shouldn't be restricting on the other line.
Yeah, just look at North Dog and with the. Even South Door and see what they do on a fee somewhere to mail. Oh, good, so the parks, do you want, park, the people with parks need more.
I thought, oh, I like it, um, I was going to um, try and work out some of those numbers based on um, acreage per person. The desired acreage, park acreage per person, you see that number is different? But um, I think at the end of the day, you guys might just see this paragraph say something about two thousand.
See, the two thousand came from um, the, what you're saying, when we came up with that.
We were.
We spoke about that.
There was, no, there was some. We had information about what the, the fees were in neighboring counties.
Actually, they were actually fifteen, eighteen and maybe. Without two, we're all.
So Roger was at the podium, Roger has to. Total cost of the nine acre park, and I did a quick calculation of the total cost of that nine acre park based on the number of lots that are going on just with the existing applications that we have, and it turned out to be about two thousand. And so that's kind of where that neighbor, that number come from, but. I'm sorry.
I thought someone mentioned other ones that were similar to two thousand, so.
But, well, that was, I mentioned to that, I don't know if it was Steve Jed or somebody else that should let other jurisdictions are charging them.
That's what I remember.
We will, we'll find the missing, maybe bring this one with, with Liam on the proportionality side of things, so we don't get on the on the uh, the legal process and.
Would kind of be nice to have a calculation, what, what is it, what does it take? You know, and, and for the potential of what the buildout is based on roughly one third acre lots, maybe you could, you could knock that down to twelve thousand acre lots because where there's going to be, you know, some variance in the lot sizes, just to get an idea of what the population might be and then.
Yeah, and then we can run a difference between the existing people versus the new people uh, and determine, all right, existing people, if they're paying their fair share, then.
There's already, there's already on property tax. There's already a property tax being collected, so that's where there's a little bit of a catch up for the people that live out there because they're already paying the tax for nothing. And you've got new people that are going to get it tagged on to their new house that are paying for nothing.
Right now is that it's recent, tax hasn't been applied yet, but I. Yeah, I think that, because I got a rebate on my, for one, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, so I think they're.
I can't remember, I've, I've looked at my tax form, I can't remember if it's on there or not.
Yeah.
You need to remember the school grown. Then the fire is.
Know that we, this. He indicated that they have.
I think it is on there, I think it's been on there for several years, yeah.
Okay, you know what, I'm realizing, I was talking to Joe uh, at the Warren, Miss Warren Park District, they haven't, they haven't started charging taxes. They have, they can, but they don't.
One back now, so. So, so West Warren's on their own.
They're on their own, we don't have anything.
Yeah.
Maybe you got church property until they sell. You're going to get third tide, one team out there.
Why not? I'm curious how many of the neighbors are still upset about that one, or is it just?
I, everyone around, well, taking it from the, that, that tweet from the art and art, well, I think all the difference. And the houses totally look different, that's different. Yeah, but we.
So, yeah, yeah, we were successful.
We got that so it's big, right?
Well, the, still, the best option for the community was to invest it in and buy, build a park.
Yeah.
I know, yeah.
So, it's going to work.
Okay, you guys ready to talk about form base? Yes.
So Charlie, are we going to need to work on this?
Uh, the one that we were just talking about? I think the changes that I'm going to be running moving forward are going to be. Uh, lots of cherry pickers, not just, but I think we'll get it in front of the commissioner just to get something to implement. And then, then working with the Augustals and all the other people. So that, that, six second pages you have, you're probably going to be looking at maybe less than ten percent.
Are we moving the form base now?
Form base, yeah, is that right? Yeah, five years, okay.
Yes, this year was ninety five dollars online, and then it started out at thirty and now it's ninety five dollars.
Well, that's what I mean, so getting all the existing, I think, ends up a little bit of a push, you know?
Yeah.
So there's eight thousand residents?
I thought it was like forty seven hundred when we did one of the open houses out there, or was that good? Maybe that was just registered holders, it was forty seven.
As soon as we got a game plan done, I just pulled the drain last night. I wonder why.
And is it done? Sorry, I'm being funny. So did I?
Twenty two, seventy eight? Oh, the second, okay.
Wait. Did we get through setbacks?
No, it's not.
Yeah, unless we're on a different one, maybe I'm.
You're on a different page.
Yeah. Oh, we did. So we just got through, we ended up. Lot development.
Right, we're on the lot.
Okay. I don't know what they do for me, sorry. Um, okay, so just starting this off, uh. There's going to be a, well, okay, but what's, let's start with, excuse me, first question. We need to get a chance to kind of talk about twelve thousand five hundred uh, square feet for the median large lot residential. So if we're looking at the, really, what, what about the five hundred square foot lots in the form base would be the periphery of those more, those higher density areas, so we're talking about a set of the quarter acre lots on the periphery of.
And things about the minimums?
No, um, maximum, minimum lot area.
So where are we doing, where are we doing flex, is that something we want to hear instead?
So. Uh, yeah, we can absolutely do that, or we just apply the flex zone instead of the planet. There are going to be other areas that maybe the form base works better.
Are they going, I just wonder, are there going to be where people will want to have like a really hard bottom of twenty five, I guess a twenty five hundred would just be the smallest lot and everything. That would just be the limit.
And honestly, the twelve fifty, I think is probably going to be used more often in the argument that one. But I would maybe some circumstances in which somebody says, you know what, I got all this property, I want it to be used under the form base zone. I've got a little bit of this in here, and then we work out the result.
What's, generally, they're just going to come, you will be put to it.
But, yeah. Yeah, and I thought about trying to write this in a way that had that, those uh, that flex. I can't think of a way to do it in a way that's walking the house to buy them too. And so, speed it like this, and then if they don't want to bring zone to this for that, what you've bought, they don't.
Okay, so the small lot residential, three thousand square feet is like, this, and if you look further, you could have four residences.
Right.
In there, yeah, connected. But the, in order to get in and out of these residences, you have, I mean, your driveways on that space, you're, I mean, we're talking, and then you can only build on eighty five percent, oh, but part of it can be, that part of it can be the driveway. I don't know.
You're going, you're going to what? So you may, you might not be able to do it for, depending on your lot, just to figure, we did four because we couldn't see more than four. Good, but they may have an opportunity to find four, especially if they're doing like uh, a duplex instead. Yeah, so I guess we do say, let's say townhome?
I mean.
No, it could be, it doesn't have to be townhomes, I mean, I, I, I see townhomes probably being the most likely.
Where it's more uh, uh, and everyone owns the pot underneath them, or that's their, they're stacked, but it could be one unit, one unit, one unit, one unit. Oh, okay, I can see that a little bit more, if they're going to four, I think four like this is going to be high.
Yeah, or it could be one unit, one unit, and then behind it, one unit, one unit. They've got a common parking area, just walking around a little bit.
Oh, we got a garage, just like with a covered parking, some, if they can get that on three thousand square feet.
And uh, I dated someone once, she had a, a garage on the ground level, you walk inside the garage, there's just a little family room, and then you walk up the stairs, and yeah, the kitchen, the great room, um, laundry facilities, uh, restroom facilities, then you walk up another set of stairs, and you had massive bedroom, yeah, three bedrooms. That would require a certain height allowance, but it's possible.
Now, we talked about removing garage frontage.
So.
If we're loaded. But I don't think you can do that with a three thousand, but as long as we have that caveat, then if they can make it work, they can make it work, but we, we just have a lot of um, uh, condos, it's, that's often it's right next to you, it's highland, and um, yeah, it's not turned out pretty, it's just one garage after another.
There's some in West Haven, though, by uh, up of forty, or four thousand, right? Behind the New Mexican, I remember, they're like, and their space differently, but they're, I don't know how, if they're a lot, it seems super small. And I was surprised, they're well, they have that space.
And do you only just see a row of garages?
They're all positioned like kind of. Yeah, and so. Front doors right by the road, and the garage behind.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, yeah. Okay, so this will work, then, that's the only.
Let's uh, let's put in here front facing garage standards. So it isn't all just front facing garage.
I think that's somewhere else in the code, isn't it?
It is in the new zone that we're working on. So if it's this, that is on wouldn't fly.
But this would be good, it's a reply also to the autumn valley and.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, if you just have that percentage of garage that can face the front, then you are able to avoid a lot of it, so you can make like a, a certain size resident thing, you can get a certain size garage for the facing.
And I believe in the um, three thousand square foot, uh, the small lot residential, I think the front setback.
Like five feet.
With ten feet or five feet, yeah, it's very small, to allow for that to be right up into the street. And then they can remove, if they want to, side remove, okay. All right. I don't know if I'm in love with the idea of median large, especially because the the twenty thousand square foot, um, the Autumn Valley uh, Planning Commission and I were kind of on a challenging back and forth on this because they don't want development, but they also don't want to take away property rights, and so we know TDRs have to happen, and the more you pack TDRs in, the higher probability you're actually going to get TDRs to work. Um, and if you don't have a program that works, then you're not saving your open space, and so they're really having a really hard time seeing that relationship.
And seeing the path and not.
They're, they're just seeing the bill, and they're not seeing what we can save, that's exactly right, and so I, Jack and Rick about this and others to, we just need to do a better job at, at advertising what we're saving. But I think they'd be better off not having this twenty acre, or sorry, twenty thousand square foot.
No.
I think that they'd be better off with like a fifteen or there, and so I know for sure they're not going to be okay with that, and so I'm just adding this in, I don't know how the um, county commission is going to feel about it, so we'll see, have a county commission.
You're talking about the buffer?
Yeah.
I think that's twenty, way too big.
Twenty thousand, I agree, now that, they're coming from a community that's one unit to three acres out there, but what they don't see is that one unit, every three acres is a mess, uh, a financial. A financial mess as well. Uh, like, mass, mass. Okay. So we'll see what happens with that, if, if the commission changes it from twelve thousand down to fifteen or twelve-five. Is what it is, and sort of a little bit, but. So, yeah, so changing from twenty down to your fifteen or twelve-five, if they do that, we won't need this one added in. And that'd be, that'd be nice if we don't actually have to have more than is necessary until we actually need it. But otherwise. You guys could see how this product, this form based, um, tool can be expanded. We just have to, you know, maybe between medium lot residential and medium large lot residential, we put medium, medium large lot residential.
We still have our twenty somewhere in the code, right? Just not the one that we're at, right?
Our E twenty and our E fifteen are gonna stand alone.
And they're just, that's what went to Highland.
Okay, we don't wanna mess with that.
That's one of the next.
Okay. So, um. See, that's minimum lot area, uh, minimum lot width and street frontage. So we do have a caveat on street frontage, so in what's otherwise allowed in this land, so each lot shall have frontage on the type of street that corresponds with its governing street type as provided in the street regulating map. Then we have frontage exception, a little bit down below. That says along the, uh, an MFR and UCBOC and GI Street, those are more commercial oriented or multifamily oriented. The frontage requirement is not applicable for a lot that is planted as part of a larger planned development, provided that A, B, and C are met, so. Development include, uh, includes or has included the dedication of construction of all required street and mid-block alley improvements that would otherwise be required by the street regulating plan. The street improvements required shall be at a minimum for the same length as the lot is wide. So, uh, if for whatever reason there hasn't been improvements along the main street, um, from which they gain access. For the same width of those lots, let's say you got ten lots in there, well, they would need to do a portion amount of linear frontage, even though they're not fronting on that street. Uh, they would need to build a portion, portion of that with the front. And then no parcel shall be configured or developed in that, that restricts the ability to develop buildings that contain street facing first floor retail operations. A lot without street, but a frontage shall not have any lot line closer to the street right of way. So basically, we're saying, keep that area reserved. Yeah. Should change to sixty, sixty. Keeping that sixty feet reserved for street facing commercial opportunities is gonna be important. Um, for a little while, you're gonna see, you know, some very light landscaping, rocks or molds or something out there that. Kind of preserves that open area for somebody to build in the future, but when the market burns, that'll be the, a, a great spot for, uh, restaurant or retail operation. And the market's not gonna turn and tell a bunch of those houses. Okay. So that's frontage, other than those streets, every other street requires frontage, and so even the small lot residential, three thousand square foot lots. Those buildings have to face the street. And so based on what we just talked about, they have to face the street and not have a garage frontage for that. Okay. As long as that's clear. Frontage for the. So the government and is, or sorry, uh, lot width for the government institutional vehicle oriented commercial mixed use commercial and multifamily residential. Lot width is twelve feet, the reason for twelve feet is to provide an access to get into, uh, and away from that street, so.
Like a flyby situation.
Like the developing the middle of the block.
Okay.
Um. This allows them to build the back behind, for example, some commercial operation that's already there.
Is twelve feet. Big enough to get.
Well, big enough to put a driveway.
For commercial operations?
No, no, sorry, the current operation is up front. This would be just like an exclusive access to, uh, an operation that's back in the back.
Well, that's what I mean, to access operation in the back, is twelve feet enough, like? To go two-way?
Um, and, and yes and no.
I was like, I don't think you can do too many crap with a twelve feet, and like.
It's a double letter. Let me get you.
Not a very good driver, but.
I've never seen one of those.
We gotta get off and off around. So, yeah, let's.
That place was wider than twelve feet.
Twenty-four, uh, twenty-four feet of basketball, actually, I think it was a bowl of twenty-eight. Let's look at that again. Alleyway, good. So we'll start with an alleyway, and then we'll talk about the importance of alleys. And again, if you would like to not call an alley, that's fine. But.
What would you call it?
I don't know, mid-block crossing, internal street.
Everybody's gonna come.
And see how wide them are. Thirty-four feet.
And, cause you never know what kind of the business is gonna be behind there, and if it's a retail operation with a bunch of people going in and out.
Right.
I don't think twelve feet would cut.
Regardless of whether or not you've got twelve feet of frontage. This is still required.
Okay.
And so when you look at your blocks. We show some suggested areas where mid-block crossings are, and that's these smaller lines. Uh, this is a requirement, at least. At the mid-block, and I think, uh, I think I wrote that a little bit differently to show that you can have it either here or here, but no closer to this street than two hundred feet, but no further than this street than.
So just doing how many features those require to be.
So from this center to the center, it's right about six hundred sixty feet. So if you put it right in the middle, you'd be about three thirty, which is the same distance as the blocks ever.
But the regulations for the commercial lot can be much smaller, so I guess what I'm wondering, what is the reasoning for twelve feet then?
Boom.
Sorry.
If you're, if you put a. A hotel in.
Oh, you have to let go one way around it?
Oh, right. You build a hotel, Starbucks on this side. So your entrance is right here, Starbucks is right here, your gift shop is right here, souvenir shop or whatever is right here, and you're, you got a twelve foot wide access where you get to your concierge. Which is essentially behind these front commercials, so you, you're still doing a commercial use for like a hotel. You do things like that for, let's say. We have a regulation, the regulation shows, says that the, your street frontage needs to be, um, retail, right? If you wanna have a real estate office. Can you? Sorry, it's realist. If you had wanna have a real estate office, and you wanna have that back on the back, you'd have to. Your twelve feet is essentially your, your double doors that open up, so that the corridor would actually build something, and then your office is back at the back, so you're still getting access.
Feet is the street width, is what you're saying.
No, 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 it's not a street, that is part of a building. You're walking through the doors and you're getting.
That's considered junior street.
No, no, sorry. The twelve feet where your front door is, is your street frontage, that's your twelve. Then you're walking down your twelve foot corridor. Starbucks on one side, may or may not be able to enter Starbucks from there. Another shop on the other side, may or may not be able to enter that shop, you're walking down hallway. It's an enclosed hallway, part of the building, to get to the back.
Oh, so this is, if you build a T-shaped.
Basically.
Okay.
This is a response to the requirement of having retail at the front. What about all the commercial uses that don't have retail? You can have a building that extends all the way to the front, the street frontage. That is not retail oriented, it's gotta be at least twelve feet. At least, yeah, at least twelve feet. Give a lot of opportunities for traffic.
But only pedestrian traffic in the twelve feet, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
There was.
Sorry.
Nobody's driving into these companies.
It's, it's an enclosed building. That's how I see it, it's an enclosed building. But a most. In some cases, you might have some exterior, uh, areas where pedestrians walk down to get to the back. But for the most part, you got. So really cool, actually. It is seven, ten.
The building would actually be shaped like that, twelve feet out front. You can't even, I'm the only one that's in this.
I was getting setbacks.
Okay, but I'm usually, here's a different way to think about it. You've got a mall corridor. I'm not suggesting we do malls, but. You have a hallway in the mall, it's only a certain way. And most, I don't know the why, because you have kiosks. We're saying a minimum twelve feet wide. You got stores that are on either side of it, but that hallway leads you to an anchor, and that anchor is. Now, wrong they put over here, cool store again. Um, or Burlington Coat Factory, is that the other one that said, like mall, I can't remember. So your hallway corridors are tying your anchors together, in this case, that corridor is tying your street frontage to whatever that uses. Whether it's an anchor or any other use. It's a way of trying to get multiple uses. Um, front to back stacked into the line, or sorry, stacked into the block, as opposed to trying to squeeze everything out cleanly on the block.
We're not the minimum lot width, though, we're not talking about storefrontage or anything, this is the minimum lot width, and so you're assuming that someone will build. Separate buildings, I would assume these, there would be one building that's leased out inside.
So it could be, and that's why we said a minimum twelve. So that there's enough space to build that separate building, there are actually a couple of examples here on Twenty-Fifth Street, but they're not twelve feet wide. Six feet wide. Where it used to be an alleyway. And they enclose that alleyway with a building. And it's just essentially, it's a hallway or stairwell, three foot by stairwell or three foot.
To get what, okay, so it's a pedestrian storefront, and so it's not necessarily that even that twelve feet is on the street, it could be recessed back here, and so you're walking in to get to the frontage right here, so. And so it's not necessarily that there's, there's this twelve foot hallway protruding between two buildings, it's the, that, that building is set back behind two buildings. And the street frontage is the front of that building that's behind them.
That's right. You're walking across.
Okay.
The, the, sorry. There's, there's actually a really cool, um, plaza in, um. Not catching, put it aside, in, in Bradenridge. You're walking down Main Street, um, and this has a street oriented commercial all, all along, yeah, and then you look over, and there's just this little alcove. That's maybe, maybe can be wide. Um, and it's brick, and it looks like it's public, public access, there's some, uh, decorative lights hanging above, so it's inviting, and you go back in there, and there is a super delicious, uh, dream candy factory.
This, this right here. Yeah, that looks nice, okay, yeah, I'm, that is, that's.
Well, that, that building, that, that building actually going up into that. Twelve foot corridor.
And that's what I think is ridiculous, but.
They wanted it close. They, they wanna keep their people out of the ring.
Oh, okay, so they just put some sort of a.
They put, maybe, maybe it's not happy for the two of them, just, but. The, the point of this is that if somebody wanted to do it, I don't see it happening very often, but I can see it happening for a hotel, uh, for sure.
But if they face their building towards the street, you need to make sure there's at least twelve feet between the two buildings to either side to access that, so if that's your main access, you need to have twelve feet to get there.
So, uh, take your building and then draw, extend that building up the twelve foot little corridor to the street front. This gives, uh, Lando the opportunity to buy. That whole corridor.
The lots.
They closed that whole, whole corridor, yeah.
So the lot should actually be that T-shaped, so they can do what they want in the corner.
Zero setbacks. Right, or side very front, and so, yeah, they can, they can just sell that land like a, like a, um, townhome.
Okay.
You're selling the dirt with it. Sorry.
All right, that was a tough one for me.
Figure if I talk at it enough, no, no, that was a tough one for me, and you could just like. Figure if I talk about it enough, I would actually get what I.
Saying of words, and one of them is right.
And the thirty and fifty don't bother me as long as we have garage standards, so we don't see just the garage on that thirty.
Okay, um, for median as well, so hang on a second.
I mean, they're, they're tight, but if you're not just seeing the face of a garage.
Yeah.
Not that.
That's, yeah. Perfect, well, and sixty then.
Yeah, yeah, I think it should just be a standard in general, because the more frontage you get, then you've got plenty of room for your garage, but I've actually seen some homes that got plenty of frontage, and they probably have. Good much house, because they have. The lot, and I'm like, it needs to be, like, set one map, but now it's just got, having, having a lot.
All the garage.
Well.
Looks like, hey, how much you can do in a garage is.
Remember in the big sky? All those townhomes are right next to each other the same way. They're, they look so classy, where they did their garage door, you know, and.
Oh, they did simple garage doors.
I made his lady that, yeah, absolutely, what was the name of that?
For the one we went to a bit powdering out, were you on the filter, Chris, Charlie?
No.
Copper door.
Yeah. When we got inside, the, the contractor's like, well, that's a garage door, like, what? And, cause it had black stone going all up to it, and then raised it up.
Interesting, and those things are cool, but then you end up needing like kind of architect approval and. Happy duties, like going residential, having to have it through by an architect.
Well, what if we put that in?
You can, you can put a garage in, but there, there's some architects, but I don't know.
That's true, you can, you can. You can pay people to tell you what you wanna hear.
Put a proof by Sarah on there. There we go, all this.
Okay.
Is it copper? No.
Well, now I know where I'm going to. Opera story. Okay. Front lot line setbacks, um, so we've divided these out into two different categories. The first category is the setback for first floor street level commercial building, the sides, the second is for all other facade. Okay? And then the two of those, we split out further, one is minimum front lots, uh, line setback, and then maximum front lot line setback, so in some cases, we do wanna say, we, your, um. Your commercial building should not be setback from the street by way more than a certain distance, so otherwise, you're just not getting the benefit of having, um, a pedestrian street oriented, um, building there, so. Uh, your minimum front lot line, no minimum, except for that lot, right? Your maximum is for government and vehicle, so GI, VOC, and, and you see that, and if are, it's five feet. Or. If you're providing dining or gathering space, twenty. That'd be public dining or gathering. That'd be your public dining, so like for your business, where you're like. Beer garden, like outside tables or something like that, but it's gotta be open for the public, it's just a private space, um, for private individuals that it would involve.
Definitely like people finding out in the restaurant, right?
Yeah, okay.
My booth over there, I'm not gonna stay here.
Jamie Jones.
Cause it's like we bought, had Jimmy Jones for a while.
For all other buildings, um, for those same four categories, um, we've got a minimum front lot line setback of forty, um, I am suggesting we change that to sixty, we only had forty there. Because we wanted to accommodate Nordic Valley, and they're on a hillside, and so they had to squeeze a lot more in. Uh, in most places for the rest of the valley, uh, Onion Valley and out west, sixty is, is the number you should have, that gives enough space between the street right of way and whatever that next building is. For the next lot line is to put some kind of street facing, uh, commercial offer. And then your maximum front lot line setback, no, that's far back as you want it. Uh, for multi-Mexican's law. Except that, as far as you wanna go to the back lawn. Or to the rear setback, whichever one is closer.
I'm building winterly across my jack fence.
So multifamily residential, uh, minimum five feet, uh, for all the buildings, and the maximum is ten feet with an asterisk. And we got a double asterisk here by the sixties, let's take a minute and see what those are, so one asterisk, so what we just read, this maximum front yard setback shall be waived if at least ninety percent of the lot's street front is already occupied by similar building. So if somebody already has, well, go back to Sarah's drawing, if you've got one of those buildings that occupies the best, the ninety percent of the street front of your lot. We're not gonna require that other one, that other ten percent built before you can go behind. Um, and so. That would be, I'm not even saying, but then we can start with one. And then comes. Or start building what would be behind, but you gotta be set sixty feet back. Okay. Double asterisk, I would have taken it, except for a public plaza, so let's look at the last just one more time, so, okay, minimum front lot line setback, uh, for all the buildings is sixty feet, except for same thing, public. Except for same thing, public plaza, the setback is, shall remain clear. From permanent building improvements or significant financial investments until or unless the first floor street level. Commercial building facade is constructed that meets the five foot maximum building setback. And parking provided in this area shall not be included in the overall parking practice. So I kinda think that last sentence should be omitted, I don't think we should allow that parking area. You're putting a permanent feature right there, it's gonna be a lot harder to get it to technically torn out at some point.
So just no parking allowed there.
Yeah, yeah, they, well, no parking. And sorry, saw something on the ground, so. Look at that, I've got two. Oh, they both, okay, they both fly the single.
And you would you like another water? Anything else?
So on that, if there was parking law there, but then it's included within five feet. You can't use that, those parking places that may have been before a party, that's part of what you may need or want or.
Require.
Require for the zone.
That's right.
You can't take that into consideration, because they're not available any longer.
Right, the intention is to get a building there and if you allow something to be permanently occupying that, or even temporarily occupying that. The renovation actually put a building there. So.
Cause you don't have the export.
That's right. So make sure they're providing all the parking they need somewhere else and you'll find that that lot will sell a lot. Okay, um. Uh, medium lot residential, uh, minimum side lot setback is five feet. Ten feet for all others. And then I did put in there. Uh, medium large to go, that is.
The big paragraph under, right under that, so it's the government, you know. I think, I think it reads the little, the unless, yeah, so it says no maximum. Any basic in buildings shall be open for pedestrian passes to internal block areas. But then it says unless, but you can't block that for any reason, correct? It makes it sound like unless you're using it actively, using it out, or you're saying it needs to be like maybe used. For something else, but you still have to provide the passage, you see how that reads?
I think that's what we meant. If you got that space between buildings, so we do have other pedestrian access.
Okay, so it is meant to be that way, so that you could close it off and use it privately for your, your business.
Yeah, if, if you'd like to see it.
No, 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 I just wanna make sure that's why you intended, as long as there, as long as everyone doesn't do that, because if everyone does that next year building.
So the mid block.
No, we always have a middle block.
We'll always have at least one mid, mid block out. Our irregular shaped lots might, or blocks might have more than one, so they just go around.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, and let's see where we add side. Maximum side lot setback, no maximum for all others. Uh, medium fifteen thousand or the twelve five or whatever it is. Where, what do you want the size to be? No more than, no less than five? No less than ten? So we make it up and just tell you better rated. No less than fifty in, in the floor base.
Yeah, you probably won't here have your garage in the front with fifty, very likely, so maybe five feet, so.
So if it's five, the, the. Vehicle access is. Seven, same way we did it in the, uh. We're going, uh, arc that complex.
Are we on the front? No, side, or on the side, okay. What do you think, Jed?
I think that's too much.
Five feet, can I eat on your sides too much?
No, I go five to zero.
Okay, so this medium large is the fifteen thousand square foot.
This is a can runder. Building clear out to the zero, five, it adds up to ten.
Ten between you, yeah. I think that's a fair way to go.
Is ten enough to get a car through? To the back? You can push your property or your building all the way to the side yard, how far away does it really technically have to be?
From?
The side, like if you have your property line, if you're saying it's a zero.
Could be right on.
As long as your rainwater. As long as whatever is coming off of your house doesn't land on the neighboring property.
But you have five feet, cause everybody's got five foot on one side and to get one on the other.
You know, you know what I'm saying? Do maintenance on that side of your building, how do you do maintenance on your?
And we have that in here, you have to get an easement maintenance screen.
And then also with your puddings, uh, you, they can be designed, so it's all on your property.
Okay, so, so it is, but then like if you're, if you have like your roof wide and it's coming down, your water shedding off, then. It has the land on your property?
It does.
Okay. Just, I, that's all I was asking, I, I think.
Yeah, rain gutters, whatever it is to keep it from.
Okay, okay, that's it.
Then you can't.
As far as the distance that you done count like that.
And it depends on, well, we're just talking smaller lots, so if where you and I live, like on a corner, you have to have thirty feet or you're correct. Yeah, so we're making for.
Yeah.
But you're on a corner, that's why, cause you have that corner thing, you're like, I did a building and it could be. It could be, yes, but we made sure that it was far enough away that it.
Just new standards for a different type of. Okay. About that one. Uh, minimum rear lot line setbacks. So no minimum for those four. First street types. And a small residential, five feet for the rear. Medium lot residential, twenty feet, um, probably stick with twenty. Uh, the, the rear, five feet. Yeah, you guys wanna?
No, I don't have any. The ones that I was familiar with have more like a standard setback. They actually had a box.
Right.
This is more for like a condo setup.
Yeah. So, yeah, five feet is probably, it's probably good.
At least give you a sidewalk to get you back to one. Um, okay, maximum percent of lot covering, so just so you guys know, we don't have a lot of zones that have a max. So we're putting that in because, kind of a lot of buildings closer together on some of these, uh, more tight, uh, street pipes. So, uh, the coverage of your lot. That regulation is designed for both, um, storm water flow, because you're gonna have a lot more hard surface. But also just to generally break up the massing of buildings on properties. So you'll see as it gets to larger and larger lots, the lot coverage gets bigger and bigger. So on, uh, government, uh, vehicle oriented mixed use commercial and multifamily, no maximum. Obviously provided compliance with all of the requirements, including drainage. Uh, so you have to figure out where the storm grain is, when that happens, it's probably gonna be underground in some locations. Maximum number of dwelling units allowed per lot? No, no maximum. But that doesn't mean that it's an unlimited number, cause there is a transferable development right section, but says. If you go more than your base density, you have to start transferring units in, but they can transfer an unlimited number. As long as they're not going taller than, I think it's forty feet and they're. If those decided that massing. Yeah, going by farmer's rights and moving on. Small lot residential, no, no, no more than eighty-five percent, so again, this is the, uh, we might not need to bump that, cause this is the three thousand square foot. Um, minimum. If we did, um, nine, uh. Your, your five foot setbacks can be. Um, and you could put no more than four homes on that. And then medium lot residential, this is where we get into the, th- these are single family, right? Medium and large. Uh, wow, look at that, got a little gap, let's do a forty percent.
What, what's the lot size on the medium one?
Um, that's the twelve thousand five hundred or the fifteen, whichever one we find by landline. One asterisk, that asterisk says that you can get an accessory dwelling. Um, so says once, um, dwelling unit, except for not including right here, an accessory dwelling unit has provided in those.
Well, that's one big container and one smaller.
So like large lot residential, it's a minimum twenty thousand square foot lot, so you can have six thousand square feet. Uh, building on it. That's the thirty percent.
Yep, got it.
And so if the lot is larger, then you'll have more in that area, but that'll never be.
Yes, six thousand square footprint, right?
Even, yeah, two stories, but, but this will include like barns and RV sheds, stuff that we want.
That's true, do you wanna go?
Sir, I don't know why you don't want people to brag about what they have.
People that are the poor, the ones that are home that have small residential, and their four, they need some business. Those people aren't living there if they can afford a hundred thousand. My niece is a P A and her, her husband is sales and they make, I, they make a lot of money and they just put it down off, cause they don't want any maintenance.
Yeah, and then they leave.
They want toys.
Like five years ago, not so common, twenty years ago.
Not at all.
No.
Oh, but it, so with those percentage, i- is that enough that, cause you can have animal bungos land on that land. On a half acre, I mean, six thousand is still quite a bit, and then you're looking at your acre lots, you can have eight thousand square feet. Of, um, a footprint. So, it is, it is big, but if people are gonna be storing, if they're gonna have animals and they're going to have. Toys, we want them to build the full arms of the toys.
Yeah.
So I don't know, is it enough?
You guys tell me.
Two thousand square foot footprint for a home is pretty big. So then they'd have. Four or six thousand square foot for. I, I'm just asking, I don't know. Yeah, yeah, so you wanna be able to build it. Yes.
You, you guys wanna do lessons?
Why don't you put it in front of your house?
Increase them.
It's probably okay, so rural residential gives you eight thousand for an acre, that's probably fine.
State law residential is a three acre, so ten percent of that. So I, I ran the map on these. I wasn't disturbed by the numbers, but if we're really looking at. You know, if you wanna get a twenty thousand square foot, uh, riding arena, uh, acre lot.
Would you ever make exceptions?
Not, not for that kind of use, I mean, we, we can do something different for development agreement, or we can get in here and change the ordinance. So we can always drop.
I guess that's true, a riding arena would be, but a riding arena on an acre is pretty tight.
Just thinking of a little bill, the, the little house with the great big building, right between the church and the new high school. Let's not, let's not overdo this with this size of a game.
Well, they have like height requirement, he's got that little house, then he's helping.
Yeah, he's the one that, that, the free zone for the pickleball.
Yes.
But before it was that, it was a building and a house. Yeah, for what it is going to be, it's great, but for what it, what it was originally built for, not so much. I'd rather keep it a little bit proportional, and then if somebody wants to do an agreement for something bigger, then at least we have some. Paying that process.
Can they go into county committees and say, I want to do, without changing the ordinance?
It has to go through the same, uh, development agreement process that all ordinance changes do. So it might as well change the ordinance at that point, but if we've got a good reason to not change the ordinance, but these guys have the unique.
Yeah, just an exception, be like, I'm not gonna build my sort of.
Now, there is a possibility that.
I don't, I doubt he's gonna wanna hear him.
There's a possibility they go to the board of adjustment and get there, so on the requirement.
Whatever you put in here is gonna be to your neighbors' fault.
Yeah.
That's what, and the regular citizen doesn't know that they can kind of get an exception, so those exceptions are favors for people, somebody's buddies, what it always ends up being. It's really not fair for.
Board adjustments is getting a variance, but the point of variance is, it's not to undermine your ordinance, the point of variance is, is to say. It's a very unique circumstance and applying this ordinance doesn't make any sense.
And with that point, I, I completely agree, that's why I say, well, we don't really think it's that big of a deal, so maybe just come in and ask for an exception, hey, well then, make it. That way here already.
Yeah. I, I agree, I like that.
Or enough that it's a buffer, you know, like Andrew's saying, don't make it so that it's a huge building with a tiny house, but.
So in the one acre zone in the county that Bill and I used to work in at several times.
Which will not be named.
Maybe twenty-five percent. Gives you a little bit extra, but that huge hole on. Okay, and then open space two point five percent, really, you did the map on that and you're looking at a big barn. Um, you gotta have basically enough, um, property to actually be the barn. Okay, uh, loading and loading, these are important, so each building anticipated to receive deliveries from a truck that has a gross vehicle weight. That's the number that is one weight, um, threshold. That's the number that is one weight threshold higher than your traditional. Like moving truck or uh we have. Furniture delivery from. Yeah, thank you, so it's one grade up from, from those, we're talking about bigger trucks, you know, so deliveries and the, the beer truck and whatever. Should definitely be provided with an off-street loading and loading area behind the building. So not in view of the public and not in the middle of the road. And like they do right up here in Front Fourth Street. And the building location, which building shall be located on a lot in a manner that preserves space for the extension of street rights of way as shown in the street regulating plan. And the lots respective setback standard. And actually, I'm at one more. Street rights of way on. Alright, building design standards, now that is your site. We just have a recap on site design standards, now we're looking at your specific building, okay? Make it fairly simple for your single family residential, it's basically what our existing standards otherwise are in most projects. So focusing a little more in with our time we have. Um I'm government institutional vehicle oriented, commercial and mixed use commercial. Maximum building height. Oh, sorry, minimum building height twenty-five feet, and there's a reason. When you're putting a building out there, um if you have like a. And foot tall building, just the lowest you can go with a platform. It's similar to that. And so what this would suggest that you do is build a parapet wall, so it looks like a little more, um even if it isn't. Hopefully that stimulates someone to build a building that's twenty feet wider than a five foot parapet wall or some. Um dropping the height down to forty.
Charlie, I know that doesn't limit the stories, they, they have four-story buildings going in in downtown Austin. Do, do we think that we need four-story buildings? Out the other corporate area, I don't know, I feel like three-story would be plenty, I'm just worried that they'll. They'll cram the four stories into the forty feet and then it'll be really like not the best housing for people, maybe what was available. But kind of not great.
But then we got, that's the living space, though, and you've got interstitial space, which is our favorite word. So you're looking, you're looking ten to twelve feet per floor. And min- minimum.
Minimum ten feet, you can do, you can fit four stories in.
Yeah, especially if, so one of the ideas in FormBase is if you have a multifamily residential. That is right next to the street, you want that to be half the, half a story off, either below or above. Um and so in those cases, yeah, you can get half a story for the bottom floor and then.
And when, I don't know, if it doesn't bother anyone else.
I don't think you're gonna see a lot of those, but.
But four stories.
Eventually, well, the fifty foot will accommodate three stories as well.
Well, we're thinking about forty feet, but.
Drop, drop them from fifty to forty.
Yeah, but if you left it at fifty, that would give you four stories.
I think you need to remember where this is gonna be too, these aren't, aren't gonna be out in the field, this is gonna be. It's not gonna feel like it's a weird, here's a four-story apartment complex in the middle of a field.
Well, if you know for a community field, that fifty might not hurt.
That's uh.
Does get more people walking to the same services.
That was kind of a thought that I had, um. Do you recall, Jed, when do you go to steal, is that at four stories or is that at five? I, I think it's at four, I think it's at four as well.
I did a wood seven-story building on San Andreas fault.
Wood? I think the regulations would be worse.
This was years ago, um it, there, I don't think it's, it's not regulated, it's just a balance of what's available and cost. And because of the, they went to the wood, and it was crazy, but. So you could, you could do a four-story in wood. I don't know if people would.
Yeah, I thought, once you hit fours, as, you know, I'll ask our building officials.
Maybe they have like a standard on it, I don't know.
That's one of the reasons why I don't think forty is gonna be bad, because I think. Most people are gonna find you sick, right? Uh there's just that increased cost. But I'll, I'll talk to our building official.
But we can just leave it at forty or fifty, or whatever you guys want, we're out there, you're the ones that know.
That would depend on occupancy too, if it's an office building where people aren't sleeping typically.
On height, on height, so if it's a commercial building, um the floor level has to be at least fifteen feet. So that's gonna, that's gonna reach your four-story. Fifteen or twelve.
For office.
Yeah, we've, I've got a list of here. You can. So we've got the limit at four, we're set at forty right now, but I think the issue is forty still allows a four-story building. So maybe we could.
Yeah, it's twelve or fifteen feet for that.
So it's a, is it twelve or?
It's twelve for government, it's fifteen for the others.
And that, I think right there will limit the number of stories you get, but you could still get a multifamily residential. With four. I called him the other day to ask him a question, he said, oh, you're not telling me you're quitting, because I keep jabbing at you.
Just one more time, Jim, just one more time.
Uh maximum building height in the open space area, twenty-five feet, except a greater height is allowed for a, a grain store delivery or similar agricultural support.
Yeah, we're knocking one of those to the ground pretty soon, so I see that's gonna happen.
Maximum building footprint, so. Government institutional vehicle oriented mixed use, oh, sorry, government institutional, no single commercial use shall occupy a footprint of more than. Thirty thousand square feet. Now that is use, and actually we didn't change the title of it. Which is funny, because I chose that number because I, I called the um. The Valley Market, the owner of the Valley Market up there, and asked them how big they're planning on building a new brokerage store up there, and they said thirty thousand square feet. I just saw their secret plans and it's forty-five thousand. I'm gonna have to change this. Costco's eighty to a hundred.
Hundred fifty.
One fifty, you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So you're in a market.
Oh, sorry, not marketplace, Smith's Broker.
So on twelfth street, they won't be able to have?
Uh that.
Yeah, I think for upholstery, maybe up in the valleys, they don't need that, but you guys want Walmart, call Costco.
That's so they put it by Jimmy John's.
In the Albu Valley, they've got a general class plan says defend against the. I'm exaggerating, but the invasion of big box commercial stores. Yeah, they don't want Costco.
You know, you just think about this, you think about the potential of, of a flagship and. Half burdens there on the south side and west of the river, south side of the actual side of the river. And you put us, that's something that's that size, you've got to start having something that is very large.
Do we want to have a maximum building footprint?
Do you need to for any reason?
Well, for vehicle oriented and government institutional, what is, isn't the market gonna drive the maximum?
It's like playing shakeout cans, and that fits that area, yeah. You know what I'm saying, they couldn't have put, not.
Yeah.
Some Costco there, you know, like.
I think the mixed use commercial definitely needs a, a boundary so that you're not. Putting something huge in the waffle zone, but I don't know if it's needed for the.
And you're not doing this, someone that comes in and tells you how to do the box. Yeah, that's true. You don't wanna have changes in your policy.
Yeah.
Or scarecrow law, have them just look at it and be like, oh, I don't wanna do that.
So this is no longer a building. And was that gonna cause you problems in grief with the folks around you now? Now I'm gonna make a specific. Okay, first floor building standards, uh this is important for that street facing, for my close, street facing commercial buildings. Um government institutional vehicle oriented mixed use commercial. Your vertical distance of your first floor surface elevation from the street sidewalks, the surface elevation. So we're talking about buildings that are right there next to the street. Your first floor, street oriented, um. Level can't be any more than thirty inches above the elevation of the street. Basically saying this should be generally walk-in, or at least wheelchair-in.
But this is say a map, oh, there we go, maximum inches map, there we go, sorry.
From that, from standing at that point, for the government institutions, the, the minimum is twelve feet. From standing on the sidewalk, so you could be potentially thirty inches lower than the floor. But the ceiling is twelve feet from where you're standing.
Um it'll be.
Which might be like an eight-foot ceiling inside the building from the floor to the, okay.
No, it'll be, it'll be from the floor elevation, so if your, if your first floor is thirty inches, then it'll be twelve feet above that.
Just making sure, Anderson.
That great, great, uh, recall. And then fifteen feet for the other two, um and actually the twelve feet, oh, I don't have an asterisk there. Most of the time, if it is actually a government building, we're accept, accepting most of the rules, so that we don't have to abide by them, but everybody else does. Before, the first floor load bearing supports. Basically, what we're saying is your, your first floor has to be made of exterior support walls and post and beam. Uh interior supports, holding the, of the floor up. That's just so that you've got a space that is convertible. To a whole variety of different uses, we're trying to make sure the market arrives here. And if we have, at the very first end, the market create a building that is not transformable. It becomes less sellable, so just make a convertible building that somebody else can come in and remodel to suit whatever the uses. And that's just the first floor, I'm gonna go above that, or whatever support walls you want. Uh multifamily residential, so your um. Vertical distance of first floor surface, so this is the five-foot minimum. So the vertical distance of first floor surface elevation from the street sidewalk, we've done it four times. So your vertical difference is five foot minimum, except thirty inches for buildings, for building area to be. That is used, not used. That's not, it's not English, okay? Building area that is used for current purposes, so the same standard as this, if it's a commercial storefront. That is at the bottom of the multifamily residential building, otherwise five foot offset, either below or above the level of the street. And that's so that we're not making eye contact when you're living in there eating your cereal and I'm passing as I drop.
Gets a plus.
First floor height for um multifamily, uh ten feet, so. This is actually um. Something else I think will help, and we need the whole four-story thing is. Even if you're not doing your fifteen feet or twelve feet, you're doing ten feet. Okay. Uh and then load bearing sports, same, except not for residential parts of the building, so residential parts of the building can have load bearing walls on the interior. Okay, not applicable for. Single family residential or townhomes or whatever, which one? Penestration means um window and door openings, for some reason, whenever I say that, there's always someone that says, wow, those are too fancy for. That's a fancy word for me, but. Fenster, huh? Okay, so minimum penetration, now when we say window and door opening, we're actually talking about opening, so the doors that are glass. And windows that are glasses. Um that's why we've had, it's titled transparent penetration. Minimum penetration for the first floor facade of the building is. Uh if it's street facing, it's fifty percent, if it's alley facing, it's thirty percent. Uh for government. And then uh minimum penetration for the second story and above, or second floor and above. Street facing thirty percent, alley facing thirty percent. Now, vehicle oriented and mixed use, little different, seventy percent penetration if it's facing that street. So big wide open windows that show all the activities happening inside of those buildings and, and make it entertaining to be. If it's alley facing, then it's forty percent, and then if it's uh second uh story or above, it's forty percent. And then multifamily residential, seventy percent for the commercial areas, thirty percent for the residential. So we're just taking the square foot area of those building facades, calculating amount and checking, making sure they're not. Uh that they do have that percentage, okay, and then uh. Except for garage, just maybe. We'll see how it can slip that dimension out. That's why they keep saying go slip things in. Entrance requirement, building with building, with building or lot frontage. Along a government institutional vehicle oriented mixed use commercial multifamily street shall be provided with a main entrance that faces the street. Except when the building is set back from the street right of way or any sidewalk pathway or pedestrian way, at least four feet, each entrance shall be recessed from the building's side. No, less than five. Don't wanna swing your door open and hit somebody in the nose who's walking on the side. Basically what that says. Okay, building design standard by area, we're gonna get through this.
But we don't need to go through.
So this paragraph here. Yeah, this paragraph right here applies to um everything there under, so building design standards by area, just says it, except for. Single, two, three family and four family dwellings, the following regulations apply.
Are we gonna have an agrarian theme for everything, but we don't have anything yet that I saw?
We do.
We do?
It's just a very simple.
Whatever it is.
Newtown Eaton area and West Weavers Forty Seven Hundred Village.
Oh, the Newtown area and, oh, I'm seeing that now.
Uh what are we talking?
This is the one that I liked for that area, so that works great.
West Weaver forty seven hundred area.
Something needs a better name.
Think you actually answered that question. Okay. Well, blah, blah, talking about building design standards very briefly. The whole intention here is to provide building design standards. That are easy to meet. Provide a very wide vari- variety of buildings. Um, and appearances, but all have a gym, the same general theme. And, um, has some consistency in form, roof line, building methods, building material. You guys have any aversion to white, the color white?
No, but.
Can we talk about that? Don't want to send a Chinese facade shouting white.
What if we just, I say you can auto match the road with that green stuff on it.
Or go get the, the cannon and. Okay, then, yeah, moving on. Street types and street design.
So have you changed the white?
I did. I just deleted no more than seventy percent of it, well, just.
You just make it all the white in them building and have all the white.
Uh, I have no idea what it is. So I just said delete, I'll talk to the Oregon Valley Commission the next meeting about that, and see if they really care about white that much. That's, that's one of the accused of slipping holes in. Okay, commercial street design. So we're creating new graphic for a typical three lane village cross section. Um, which you guys have all seen, um, a typical two lane village cross section, which we've already designed. So, um, this one is typical, uh, two lane village cross section. Um, now, let me give you guys his interest on another alternative. Where are we?
Yeah, where it steps down. Yeah, you don't have that picture in.
On the street cross section that, um. So, um, John Lewis, I developed it out of the valley. He was proposing to take that bike lane. And put it behind the angle parking in the street, in the street right here. Yeah, because they back out.
Yeah, they can't see you. And then in the bike area, you're like dodging people backing up. Oh, that's terrible.
Okay, smart.
A tree space and the roots in Utah grow on the surface enough because we don't have any ground, you know, we don't have water to go down. And I'm, I like, can we just make sure we pick trees with really small root systems or something?
Yeah, uh, so they have, they can go a little bit, uh, more, but deep rooting is the key.
But isn't that more determined that I was like, okay, their water sources and roots will be the one.
That's the problem out here in Western Weaver, that there's too much.
And then they just tear up the sidewalk and the bike lane. And I'm not saying I don't like the tree, I just, I don't know, how do you solve that?
Let me give you my opinion, um, on the tearing up the bikes. It takes decades for that to start. Uh, they've gotta get to a certain.
Thirty years goes by pretty quick.
Yeah, it does. It does. Um, I just think that we have to accept that there is gonna be a little damage to be prepared also while I'm just budgeting for it.
Well, the first ones that are gonna see it are the guys on the bike anyways, you're doing it better. Yeah.
Making sure people trim those trees so you don't get whacked in the face with the tree as the biggest.
So that'll be a little simpler because it's village area. What most of these little communities have, um, once they incorporate. They got, you know, someone who drives around on that four, uh, four wheeled, you know, thing with the sprayer. Yeah, and sprays all the vegetation and.
So they have, they have to even need to wait for that, right?
Well, what I'm saying is hopefully we set it up right.
There can be a district that takes care of it instead of being every individual on there.
Yeah, it's just a matter of setting up, uh.
Cause right now it's set up for every individual.
Yeah, and that. That particular, um, area, they get enough, uh, density of business owners right there. Um, the business owners can be together and have a business association that hires someone. So I wanna give them opportunities to have success and then they all think the trees may allow them to die. Not because of any other circumstances, then they don't water it or they go out and chop them down. Is what it is. Yeah, but you're right. We do need to find a tree species that works out here because even these subdivisions that we're approving.
I think so part of me with the subdivisions is like, put that tree in the front yard, not in the park strip.
So we've actually thought, you're speaking, you're speaking engineering anyways. Um, I, I don't know, I don't. I have a cube stick more in my front yard, my curving better is evening with that and mud puddle, right where it's supposed to drain. Uh, step out in every time I get out of the car. That wouldn't change it.
Middle of your front yard. Cause our, our house had a house that.
It is. You wanna know why?
Cause the bulb is hidden up in there somewhere.
It's actually, I started, I saw them, that's why I drew it that way. I saw me. I saw those in the inventory, they've got three straight dark guy, like it's, in fact, inside of that, they have a. So, one of the things that, um, like you mentioned, that developer brought up is, he's having a hard time. You need to have one side of the, the front of one side of the road. Clearly communicating with the other side of the road in terms of design, in terms of economic flow. Um, when you're on this side of the road, you wanna be able to see what's being sold on the other side of the road. That just helps, helps the, um. The use to support each other. And, uh, the concern that he has is a hundred twenty feet is not that. Going through, um, these areas. If we did put a, um, bike lane in the road, we'd probably have to go to, uh, parallel park. Uh, even then, you gotta put that bike lane for far enough away that those doors are swinging out into that bike lane. So that's really in the road. I wouldn't obviously suggest we do this in twelve street or forty seven hundred. I think we're looking at maybe the three lane standard and something like this, because it just is what it is, but. Let me think about the nine hundred where that leads into what will, what is and will continue to be a residential area. About having just a little bit narrower than six feet. There's some area that we can trim. For example, you don't need a ten, a twelve foot wide, uh, travel. You can have a ten foot wide travel. You don't need an eighteen foot wide, well, eighteen foot, uh, distance away from the lip of the curb. Or angle parking, that can easily be sixty. So we can give this a little diet and trim it down a little bit.
You're talking about sixty foot half width.
I'm thinking of fifty foot half width, because this is a sixty foot half.
Right, yeah. So you're trying to trim it down a little bit.
Trying by the way to trim it down on both sides. So cut two feet out of the, the travel lane, two feet out of the parking lane. And the issue with that, if you cut two feet out of the parking stall. If you have, and the, uh, quad cab extended.
But is this, like, what, what setting is he trying to use?
Um, it's actually not too different from nine hundred. It's just a road that doesn't exist yet. So he built it from scratch. And it would lead into a, a residential area. The issue that they're gonna have up there is if they get a really popular main street. Anyone who's up there with the toys are gonna have to figure out where to park it. And so they're gonna need to find. That's actually an ideal circumstance. Uh, and this is what Snow Basin wants to do and what they have a plan for. At least over in the Strawberry Bowl area, is their village, they've got a pretty narrow cross section up there. Everything drains to the, or everything, um, goes to the middle of the road and they are gonna be providing their own snow removal blowers and all that. Um, but on either side of Main Street, both sides of Main Street, they're gonna put a parking garage at full build out, they'll have a parking. So you go, you get in, you park, you go experience Main Street, you go back. And not a whole lot going on the road. One of the benefits of having angled park on the road is it makes something look, um, busy. And busy means activity, activity means there's something to be seen there.
It sort of causes people to slow down a little bit.
It does that as well. Yeah, a lot, a lot of the retail industry will tell you that we want our parking up front, because we want people to know we're open. Obviously, what do we do when we go, oh, is that open? Oh, it's probably there, it's probably closed, let's just go to the next one. True. Um, and so parking on the street, I think, is, is important to show some activity. So if we're all convinced that we're all gonna be driving long bed extended trucks with, uh, uh, pitches on them, we should probably. So I still think we could change the, um, twelve foot travel line to ten. Um, that's, that's wide enough, but especially if we have these, uh, if it's the eighteen foot. Unless we have a truck in every single one of them. Uh, I don't think they're gonna have any issues getting vehicles past each other.
Well, that, that, that would be better for a Volkswagen sitting next to one. I've been on twenty fifth street when you park on a road there. Yeah, a couple of SUVs, medium sized issue. It's not large.
It's tight.
Hard to get out of it too, when you try to back out along the back end of traffic.
On a caution using twenty fifth as the example, as granted the street as it is, they have so many overlays. I mean, they've probably got more than a couple feet of asphalt there that the crown of the road. So as you're pulling off, your car does, and so your head is right here.
But on, but on the part of when you're parking, you're trying to get out, you know, um, it's tight.
Oh, in the parking areas?
It's tight.
Yeah, yeah.
If they put one, at least maybe one, maybe two, depending on the length of the block less and widen those tall. Four inches, six inches, it'd make all the difference in the world.
I have, I've been meaning to go over there and actually do some measurements just to draw some comparisons. Um, John also mentioned that he was, he was doing the exact same thing, measuring twenty fifth street and saying that works. And then they're only fifty feet, uh, or sorry, less than a hundred feet apart from each other. They don't have a bike lane, they don't have a bumper buffer, uh, those bumpers just hang over. In a few slots, no. In a couple spots, they've got ten foot wide sidewalks, I think.
And the fourteen is more to have an outdoor. I'm kind of up in the Oregon Valley. I mean, I know in Hart City, they do have some outdoor eating areas along Main Street.
Having in the road.
Right, they, they know those areas. So they are used in winter conditions. Um, but maybe we look at reducing.
Oh, but yeah, to help them out there, we could do that. Um, one of the reasons why, so fourteen was selected for a specific reason. Um, doesn't have to be, it's, it'd be inconsequential, or it's just depending on what your guys' desire for your community is. So have, allow up to seven feet to be for dining and shopping, some outdoor displays. But still keeping a clear path of seven feet, so you can get three people side by side that you're there, um, walking next to each other. Though now we're not a three people come this direction, then suddenly it's got more than nobody ever does and we just fuck with each other. Let's see, I said create a graphic. Okay, uh, yada, 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 moving down some mid block alley, we already had a good conversation about that. Now, adding some language in, let me remind myself what this is. Okay, this is the, okay. If we have perfectly, perfectly square six hundred and sixty foot wide blocks, then your mid block alley is gonna be at the three hundred and thirty foot marker right down the middle, right? But not all of our, uh, hours are gonna be mid block in fact, or sorry, blocks are gonna be perfectly straight. Thank you, sorry. Okay, um, for example, the, uh. What we just looked at, uh, with Pat's project, on the old, um. Halsion subdivision, where that open spaces, they're showing new lots in there. And so if you remember from the presentation that, uh, US made, uh, there's a little red outline of one of those blocks. I just outlined it to get a feel for what the maximum length is from any, on any one of those legs. And there were a couple of legs that were close to seven hundred and fifty. So not a terrible distance above six hundred and sixty. The goal with six hundred and sixty, I don't know that we need to absolutely have six hundred and sixty everywhere. When you're in these more commercialized areas, that's one, what we're looking at even more important. So. Just changing it to say, when any size street block can. Side of the street block contains a GI DOC, NBC or MFR street designation. That side should have at least one alley designed and constructed, and then some qualifiers. Regardless of the configuration of the mid block alley on the street regulating plan map. A mid block alley shall be located at a distance that is no greater than three hundred and thirty feet and no less than two hundred feet. So there's, uh, someone that said, from the street, from a street intersection or other mid block alley intersection. The mid, in some cases, if you've got a long, um, block, you're gonna have maybe two mid block outs. So then it's not, it is, maybe it's more like that. Uh, mid block alley access to the street shall align with an existing or planned mid block alley access on the opposite side of the street. So you get an, uh, an actual intersection on both sides. If there is no existing or permanent mid block alley on the opposite side of the street. Then the subject mid block alleys access street should be located in a manner that provides a reasonable opportunity for it to be created on the other side. So don't put the mid block alley where there is, or just tease into a store like CrossFit, if there's already store in it. Yeah, not for you. Uh, with the mid block alley shall be, um, at minimum as follows. Residential street design, follow whatever the residential street designs, uh, or, uh, design shows that we want to be adopted. Or now with legislature's. Um, street design standards, so. What are you looking through here? You've got pedestrian priority designs, raised crosswalk, curb extensions and bowl valves. The whole point of all of this is to say where the pedestrian is, is the priority right of way in these, uh, villages. Now, some of this, let's see. And then you need to make sure it's clear when I'm talking about vehicle on each, my goal. Pedestrian has a priority on all of these things. The vehicle comes up to the level of the pedestrian. Also, the crosswalks and, and the treatment of the intersections should be unique with colors, color you see here in Ogden. So that tells, communicates to the driver, not only are you going up a ramp, but you might be going up. Uh, you're going to pass, but it is something, something's coming, so. This shows mid block crossing where ramps down. Um, the whole intention is to keep it up high, and this is just the literature of mid block crossing. Okay, sidewalks, fourteen feet. Uh, paved pathway, pathway alternatives, so if there is no reason for the fourteen foot sidewalk on that side, maybe it's adjacent to a park or an open space area. Then I can, the fourteen feet can go away and ten foot wide pathway can install instead. Covered boardwalk, you can put it in, obviously not required, you can put it in, you just have to sign an agreement with the county that you can operate and maintain it, or the county's gonna tell you, take it out. Probably charge you for taking it out and charging you for putting it inside. And there's an example of a boardwalk in Jackson. Tree trees are required. Uh, so it's gotta be of a species, um, that can survive and thrive in the area. That will leave minimum damage to the road infrastructure, let's see. Uh, tree species approved by the Director of Land Management, part of review. Senior President of Development, shall be given by letter, a letter from a cert- certified arborist or landscape architect certifying that the proposed tree type is suitable considering site conditions and local climate. Method that are, okay, shall put planting methods that are specific to the site. Planting methods shall provide means of protecting the longevity of the tree and street infrastructure. Your tree shall be provided with a permanent watering method with irrigation infrastructure installed over there. I don't know why it's on, there's a space between these. I don't know why it's not showing the space somewhere for anything. Tree planting, no tree should be planted within clear view, um, of the intersection, uh, as provided by Ashville. To provide continuous shade. Spacing between trunks shall equal the average diameter of the specific tree species canopy at maturity. No carve out of exception for the Northern Valley area. They wanna do more evergreens in clusters and groups. Um, so they asked for an exception for that. Tree maintenance, that's the responsibility of the person who owns the property right next door. So if, if it's your business, you, you're responsible for maintenance of that tree. If the county chooses to do something else or the community chooses to.
Oregon Valley, you should have suggested maybe Aspens instead of.
So the Aspens goes in. All that, all white, all those roots too.
Colors. That they, they have challenges at the Supreme Court, it can't require.
Aspens or trees.
Color.
Oh, color. Oh, color.
That was in the nineties, that was in California, I don't know if they. We went to the Supreme Court.
Wow.
It was like saying, can't sign your rights away.
Right.
And, but everybody puts them in the restricted cover, so. They have, they have a stock.
Uh, that's, uh, that's crazy.
You can't require what?
Colors.
Of trees.
No, no, there is not. Buildings.
Oh.
Even in a, uh, prod.
I'll have to, I'll have to check in, uh.
Well, you can do.
Just might not be able to enforce it.
Some may.
Okay.
They have to take you back to the Supreme Court.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay. Um, bike facility required and then height of tree limbs above the bike facility. Uh, not a big deal on this, cause like six foot wide bicycle facility. Um, bike, uh, lane alternative, so we already have a, a lane alternative where. What if topography results in a building to safely create su- uh, sufficient street right of way depending if there has discretion to allow a bike lane to occupy the street's vehicle traveling. This is kind of, this is called a share of. I don't know who made that up, but we're using it. Street parking required, four foot three angle parking. Tree parking alternatives, so when photography results in the availability to safely create sufficient street with the engineer's discretion to allow a perilous street parking design instead. Um, parking bumper buffer. So it's gonna have the, uh, curb gutter and drainage facility, so one of the challenges is when you've got all these raised crosswalks. Water's gotta go somewhere. You see what I'm seeing out here is they just left a gap and put a metal plate over top of it. So where the old, uh, curb gutter was rather than redesign the whole drainage system. That's reasonable retrofit, hopefully if we designed it the right way in the first place, we'll just have boxes that connect. Overhead projections, they are allowed, you have to have a contract with the county to have those overhead projections, be responsible for maintenance of it. Um, amenities and furniture. So this is more regulations and restrictions, non-permanent street amenities such as. Street furniture or outside dining benches, bike racks, planters and streets, uh. And street sales and displays are permitted between. Street trees and along sidewalks, as long as they don't cause any hazard to the use of the bike lane and they're located in a manner. But needs a continuous seven foot wide pedestrian walkway. Uh, street lighting, uh, street lighting shall complement the architectural theme. You don't have to say any dark sky, cause that's already typical in Ogden Valley and may or may not. Allow that, we'll find out. Um, overhead utilities, have to be underground, even existing overhead utilities, need to be better. I'm actually kinda surprised the county doesn't already have that one. We do have ordinances on new overhead utilities, sorry, all new utilities have to be underground. But we don't have an ordinance that says you need to retrofit it, what is under there. It's expensive, but. Street regulating plans, so, uh, we've talked about, um, the street regulating plans that are coming, uh, down, uh, below this. And then pathway, location and design standard. What I don't have in here. Is the allowance to reduce that right of way from thirty feet to fifteen feet if the fence material is. Either four foot tall fences or, uh, fifty percent semi trash, but that will be written here before this comes before you to adopt. Um, so street adjacent, um, pathway, for example, versus a. Uh, mid block or through lane or through, uh, lot. Uh, street regulation. Has changed. It's last time. So. Any concerns about the street regulating plan?
No, Charlie, you know, eight, five.
I see eight, twenty seven, so yes. Seven twenty five, believe me, we got another hour.
Well, we're trying to revisit.
Yeah, let's finish, I'd like to finish it if we can, cause I'm just gonna hopefully brief and explain the rest of it. Um, parking and internal block access, this is the section that says, inside of your block, you have to have internal access. This is where your parking goes and your parking lots have to have a shared, um. Uh, easement that, uh, shared crop access easement with other lots that are in that block as well. Well, point is, everybody shares the parking lot, everybody shares the expense for it, everybody shares the expenses for coming in and out. It's no one person bears the whole, the sole expense and nobody.
Based on.
They, that's, that's the only reason why I did. Oh, but residential parking, uh, under no circumstances, um, can be outside of that street block. So put your residential parking inside of that street.
Oh, or the, um. The.
Residents is that.
Multi, like.
Yeah, residents that are such. Uh, so you can't count the parking stalls out on the street as part of your residential, it has to be off street. Parking lot tree is really not much of a difference than what we did with the design standards a couple of years ago. Uh, parking lot structure design standards, we're just saying if you put a parking lot structure at the street front, make it look like it's not a parking lot. Thanks, Brad.
Door opening. Car garage door.
There's actually some really cool examples of how to make a, a parking lot look like. Um, so it doesn't look like a parking garage. Crop access easements, this is where that comes in, if you're building, it goes to a zero lot line. Um, you need to have them, you need a property on it so you can operate and maintain that, unless they also have a zero lot line, uh, on their estate. I don't think. So we're not quite gonna get through transferable development rights. Let me ask you guys this question, is there any concern about?
Major.
It's just.
Okay.
I'm gonna find where, where the cookie is.
She's like we did in Glendale, everyone picks a paragraph and reads it.
You're aware of it.
Somebody gave me her coat. I'll fall asleep tonight, okay.
Just tell Charlie we're gonna defend the streets.
That's true. You didn't think he'd die. So, form based zone and transferable development rights. In order to do TDRs, you have to have a receiving area and you have to have a sending area. And so your form based zone, we've already designed as being a receiving areas for two blocks. What I am suggesting for Western Weaver, so basically first off, your transfers. Um, you'll take your base density and then you can, uh, so your base density is what you already have on property. Before you rezone it to the form base, so we'll say you have twenty acres, eleven acres on, you've got twenty acres that you can otherwise do. So we're not trying to penalize you by rezoning the form base, trying to incentivize that, eat that density. That's the amount you get to start with, and then you can transfer any amount in after that. Um, they gotta be transferred from areas that show on the general plan map as a TDR transfer area, which is just those agricultural protection areas. That essentially is all that along the, on the general plan map. Now, here's the deal, uh, and this is something that, uh, Mr. Blanch is asking the county commission for. All of these other lot owners are getting an upzone to, uh, triple their density, right? And so, um, do we say your base density is whatever it is? Before you rezone times three? Or do we just have them take the base density and transfer everything else in?
I think it should be the times three, I hate to say it, but I think that's what it should be.
Yeah.
Because they're gonna get, they're gonna get the third acre anyway, and that's pretty much what we told them they were gonna get, just by looking at the map at a glance.
I don't quite understand, so you're talking about. Which areas?
Um, anywhere in a form base zone.
In a form based zone.
Right, well, sorry, I should say anywhere that doesn't have a maximum number of dwellings that's for. So your, the glory, the commercial, your government institutional, your mixed use commercial and your mobile.
Oh, okay, and they, the, the form base code basically requires them to do everything we require. Uh, that we've been requiring for the other people with a third acre, that's why you're saying that maybe their base density is the three rather than the one because they're.
Actually requires, you know, a whole lot more.
Yeah.
But they're still going to have to do. The contributions to the parks and such too, so, so it would just be, it would be equivalent to what's going on, what, what we're doing for everyone else. And that's why we're saying base density is the three.
Basically.
You're just saying that for Western.
Yeah, Oregon Valley, they will hang on.
Just wanted to make sure. You weren't trying to slip something.
Hey, guys, uh, West Weaver plant commission said we should do it, so. And how it that was, I agree. They're not getting, they're not getting a bonus on our business.
Shooting stars still there.
Yeah, that's where.
Okay, so basically you start with your base density, multiply it by three, that is what you have when you get the rezone. And more than that, as long as you're within one of those, on one of those three streets, four streets, sorry. You can do more, you just gotta transfer. I mean, it's very, which by the way, assuming Brad accepts everything else that you guys asked him to do and gets to the county commission that way. There is an adjustment, we only gave him ten, based off of ten acres, probably just that. I would recommend that. Countation.
Oh, okay, well, I think it has to be that way. Because Brad's not the only one that's gonna develop something.
No, sure.
So that's where it kinda, you know, ten.
Yeah, but what was he developing?
Oh, he's, uh, he was doing commercial street frontage with resident.
He was the first one.
Yeah, right, they're on twelve.
Yeah, glad you guys are comfortable with that, cause. Already died hundreds.
No, I.
That's what.
That's what I do.
Yeah. Okay, assuming he gets.
Right.
Okay, transfer density, Oregon Valley planning area. Okay, they've got their own little formula, Western Weaver planning area, so transfer allowances and limitations, so. Um, you can transfer from the A one, A two and A three zones. Do you wanna allow them to transfer now? Nevermind, there's no, there's no private property in the shoreline zone, that's all. So just the A one, A two, A three zones, any of the zones that you can think of that we can transfer from. After they get rezoned to the, um, our reflex or whatever, uh, our flex fifteen, whatever it's spelled, or fifteen. Do we wanna allow any of those to be cleared off? They get the upside to. Uh, for, I'd be able to.
Oh, man, yeah, you could really double down on that.
Okay, well.
Why not?
Well, I think you have, because if they go, if they, if we triple it for those landowners. And then they sell those units to a village owner, landowner, each transfer would be triple as well, so now you're.
You know, I wonder if that's gonna come just like our green spaces. CEO did the one and then soon as Bush come and show that they're gone.
Yeah. Yeah.
That, that same thing might happen in those.
They're in a hundred years, yeah.
I think it's very possible.
I mean, but then. Nobody would even think where, where we're at right now in nineteen seventy, nobody would ever dream that.
True.
And so the more people there is, and the more economic development we have, then speed it up here because we're running out of space, other.
Yeah, well, during that road out to Harriman fifteen years ago, there's twenty houses, maybe thirty.
So three per acre is the transfer, right? So you can't get three per, right, it's three per acre, so that someone can't see, like you said, doubling down, down, down.
Yes, um, so.
I think.
There's a bit in that why.
You go back it please.
This is why Charlie put it on the end.
Basically, if you go out to a farmer, you negotiate for one of their development rights, get free over your property, you can get free instead of one. That's essentially how that.
One for three.
Yes, I wonder for years.
But as long as the, it's, that development right is per acre, you know, yeah, which would, it would be.
Yeah, go out there, grab one development right, which is one per. And then.
Yeah, but what if you trade it in the, in the new zone? But you're gonna be.
So.
Yeah.
By the frame screen, that's why I said A one, A two and A three only.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, and it's only. A lot of our soul.
Sure, can you step out for a minute?
I meant to make it so that. It could only be transferred from the TBR overly area on the general plan map. You guys comfortable with that, that's an A T A protection areas, those are the. I, I say that because those farmers have said, look, we don't wanna develop, at some point in the times, yeah, I hope it carries.
How would you wanna make sure that it's the best plan to protect?
Now, wait a minute, who said that?
What size? So the farmers put that protection area.
It was up to on your, you know. That was way back, boy.
Yeah, they can always come in and.
No, I said it was way back.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I agree, so a lot of them might change their minds.
Oh, I'm just telling you. Yeah, there's somebody said. More, you can put, switch them off, more bars around there.
Yes, you got it, exactly, that's what kinda.
There's no, no reason why we should limit.
There, this was.
Oh, just those, maybe A areas.
I don't, well, it's my, well, I mean, to that point, why would you limit it just in those areas? If somebody outside of that area said, hey, I, I, I wanna see it stay the way it is. But.
I've never heard of the matter where.
Person that's moved in and got ten thousand square feet. No, no, I'm not, I'm not yet.
What if it's in a zone that we want to see developed, we want, cause we're trying to, we're trying to create a plan in clusters. And if you have random people here and here, that where we can't develop these random patches, it might get difficult.
So that's one of my concerns as well, for example, in fact. Figure out how to do this the right way, uh, their piece property, it is in the agricultural protection area. And, uh, the general plan shows a people village to be right there. Um. I know that particular landowner is probably not super comfortable with any kind of development happening on the block.
Yeah, this generation.
And this generation, right, and so this land, if that landowner runs down, puts all of his rights up for sale, somebody grabs it and moves it over to a different village area. Then that particular village area doesn't have them, it won't have them, cause we're zeroing out those property rights, or not zeroing, we're eliminating the ones that he sold.
I think it has to be based on the general plan. Only that it has to be A one, A two, A three, and it has to be agriculture on the general plan, cause I'm nervous.
What if we say?
The general plan's just a general plan, it's not, not written in stone.
Right, yeah, so that's kinda my thought was maybe we can use that polygon on the map to make it written in stone here just for that component. Right. Yeah, so that's kind of my thought was maybe we can use that polygon on the map to make it written in stone here just for that component of the whole plan. But if you'd rather see that, have a little bit more flexibility, maybe what we say is.
Why not?
Anywhere in the A one, A two and A three zones, as long as. It's not in an area that's otherwise marked as.
We'll be doing the same thing or somebody here would do it, change the whole thing in five, ten years.
Yeah, we should. And we didn't base the general plan on those ag protected areas. We gave, we gave those folks that, those, those areas to keep. Whether they transfer them into TDR or they go take them out of the air pack, they, they're just as good a chance that they'll take it out of the ag protection as there is that they'll transfer it to a TDR.
So really. The reason you looked at tonight was in that protection area, the reason I looked at last time, ad protection area.
Exactly. So that's what I'm saying. You, I don't think you want to limit it to that. If somebody decides that's what they want to do with the property, I don't think it should be limited to the.
No, if they want to keep their property, they keep their property. If they want to do something else.
Exactly.
I would base it more on, I know it's not written in stone, but if we don't. Go forward with an actual plan, then it really won't be written in stone. If we, like, as much as they want to protect their.
That's not for their voice on the problem.
Yeah, the, the, the problem here is, is that this is arbitrary. Anybody can do whatever they want. They can take those around in and out of that act protection as many times as they want to. And that's why that ag protection area doesn't mean crap. It means that it's, it's, it's diagonal lines on that map. But that property can be taken out of that anytime that property owner wants to go down.
I, 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 I agree with that. And that's why I'm saying I'm not concerned about the ag protection zone as I am about. Protecting our infrastructure, protecting where we have put, like, if we put the infrastructure in or water. Then I want to make sure that we're not taking a, a prime swap of land right by where we have. Put infrastructure in and putting in ag. Protection, you know, like it's somewhere that has sewer. I don't think we want to transfer those rights. Somewhere else because we need to develop that land and that's where we put the infrastructure in. That's my, that's my concern.
So that, that is my concern as well. And we talked in the general plan quite a bit about how these open space areas. For agricultural purposes don't belong in subdivisions or the developing areas. And so if it is allowed to come from anywhere in the A one, A two and A three zone, we could find these areas that just. Turn into a ten acre patch of, of weeds at some point then because it is in the middle of a subdivision area. And so planning out where the open spaces should be preserved versus where not. We've already done that with the general plan map. So there's a big chunk of land just west of forty-seven hundred and all the way to the river. And starting at twelfth street, going all the way up to past Plains House. Here on Minnesota, I don't know.
Yeah.
Up past a um.
Out in the porch ones.
Yeah. Down the porch. Um, that is listed as agriculture, uh, large lot agriculture. Uh, so it's green on the map. It not only has the crosshatched lines for the A P A areas, but it's also shown as. Uh, not receiving third acre lots. So somebody in one of those areas came in and asked for a third acre reset. My recommendation to you guys would be for a nine. Uh, because your general plan says, no, that's supposed to be one acre uh lots out there.
Whoa.
I didn't, I didn't write a plan.
That sounds select.
It, so it was selective.
Based on location.
And then, and then I guess you can say, well, you should have showed up to the meeting.
So we're, we're saying. We're treating who can get rich and who can't.
Location, location, location.
Way of looking at it. It's not intended to be like that, but that is, you know, an outcome, an unintended outcome. Yeah. Um, now that request to change the color on that, that came from the commission. It used to be all yellow and then they came back and said, you know what, we're probably gonna get hanged a lot less. If we have this area here, which is low lying land, inundated with water every once in a while, probably leave that as, as that. Now, my understanding is that may also have been at the request of perhaps a proper. Who would really like to see up here a self-explanation.
I only know two people by me that could do it, two brothers. Everybody else didn't do it. Pretty soon that died with transferring to development rights. That land will be used for nothing. Or if it's zero, they'll change the zoning.
That's what they'll have to do.
Yeah, eventually, whatever.
Yeah, that's what's gonna happen.
And that's the key to what you said about the general plan. It's just a guy.
Yeah.
It doesn't dictate, it can be changed.
All that down.
Exactly.
But you wait enough years. And things will change in our course as well.
About a hundred percent. Um, so my thought is maybe we just stick to uh those areas shown on the plan as not being slated for a future third acre development. Really just kind of prioritize those areas, help those landowners see a benefit of, of selling if they choose to sell. Now, they might only sell twenty percent of the rights. They might only sell fifty percent of the rights. And so maybe at the end of the day, you're not seeing one acre lots. Maybe you're seeing two acre lots or five acre lots in those areas. Um, until obviously.
See, and that's where I think we went a little bit wrong and, and Commissioner Jenkins kind of drove it. And, and the reason I say that is because it all should have been thirds. And then that way they had the thirds begin with. And then, and then if they sold their TDRs, then, then you could sell them to something else. Then if they sold their TDRs, they were. They were selling a third of the time instead of an acre of the time. And you wouldn't have these patches of crap that we're gonna have out there eventually as they sell off these TDRs if that even happens.
Right, right, yeah, don't disagree.
You know, I don't mind weeds. I really don't. It makes it feel more uncountryd. I like that safe brush.
I like the safe brush because it's what was there. I don't like, I don't like the olive trees. I don't like the.
They reach out twenty feet to scratch. You just stay away from it. But I like that. I don't mind that.
Um, we're done. That's thanks. So the level is.
He wouldn't have if Brad doesn't.
Hey, the very last thing to leave is the uh moderate. And you may have a lot of problems.